We're good? We're almost there. There we are. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome on this snowy morning to the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners Meeting. I'm going to call the January 24th Board of Washoe County Commissioners to order. And Mr. Dirks is joining, Gary Dirks. Would you lead us in the salute to the flag this morning, please?
I solemnly swear.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Denae, for starting us off a little different than we intended. Appreciate it. Mr. Dirks, thank you very much as well. Madam Clerk, can I get a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Bob Lucy, Chair.
Here.
Vice Chair Marshall Bergbogler.
Here.
Kitty Jung.
Present.
Von Hartung.
Here.
Jeanne Herman.
Here.
County Manager John Slaughter.
Present.
Paul Leparelli, Assistant District Attorney.
Here.
And I'm Jan Galassini, Chief Deputy Clerk. Sir, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. All right, next is public comment. Before I turn it over to the manager, though, however, I want to make a quick statement. I know a majority of you may be here this afternoon or this morning to discuss Agenda Item 10, which is Discussion of Waste Management Franchise Agreement. So we are going to try to move that up to accommodate some of you as soon as possible with that, but just wanted to give you that heads up prior to getting started here. So, Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chair, next item is Item 3, which is Public Comment. Comment heard under this item is limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the Commission's agenda. The Commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person, and comments are to be made to the Commission as a whole.
Madam Clerk, will you call public comment, please?
We have Claudia Watkins, followed by Ray Lake, and then Tammy Still.
Good morning, Ms. Watkins.
Good morning. I've never done this before, and I'm shaking because I'm nervous and I'm pissed.
Okay, take your time. If you could just state your name for the record.
Claudia Watkins.
Thank you.
I'm here regarding waste management. Born and raised in Reno, I love Reno, I love Washoe County. I retired criminal investigations from the county. Longstanding, all my family married here. I love Washoe County. I am hoping to inform you folks on exactly what this new waste management contract is going to do, not just to me, but to other people in the area. I used to pay for seven totes for horse manure. One tote was for my house, the other six was for horse manure. Waste Management asked me after numerous conflicts, and this didn't work, that didn't work, they asked me to go and purchase my own totes. So I did, over $300 that I didn't really want to spend. So I was allowed to put out seven 96-gallon totes, including my house and the horse manure. They now want to drop that to one 96-gallon tote. And I can't use the $300 ones that they told me I could go buy. They don't want us to use those anymore, so I don't get to use that. This is physically and financially very horrific on me personally and other people that live in Washoe County. The demands that they're doing are too bad, there's no NRS for it because it's criminal. They take away six totes from me, and then they increase it a little bit, and that doesn't matter. It's ridiculous. Waste Management is being greedy. They have the monopoly, for lack of a better word here, so they're using it, and I can't believe that the Commissioners who were voted in to take care of the people would allow this to happen. They have their things, okay, we can do 30-gallon black garbage bags and put a little sticker on, whoopee. That doesn't work. It's not going to work. I have a dump trailer. They want to charge me $100 to $120 when I go and dump my dump trailer. I've already been out in the hills, there's already dumps out there from other people that are pissed and can't afford it or don't want to, can't handle the extra things that they're doing right now to Washoe County. There's so much history I have with waste management, it's just crazy. I took down, just a quick example, I've got 30 seconds left, I am a female, I can talk fast. I took down two totes that I get now to do, and I did pay for an extra one. Dark out, pitch black, brought them down to the garbage, looked at them this morning as I drove out in the light, and they're the kind that I bought, so guess what? I'm going to come home tonight, and they're not going to be dumped. I'm begging you guys to not do this. Don't allow this to happen. Take into consideration people that live in the county, that love the county, that love the rural lifestyle, and that want to keep their horse poop away and clean. And it's just not going to happen with what Waste Management is doing right now.
Thanks, Ms. Watkins.
We have Ray Lake, followed by Tammy Still.
Ms. Chair, if I could.
And then Gary Dirks.
Sure.
Before we start, we are having some technical issues with our outside feed. There's video, but there's no audio. We have technicians working on it right now, so hopefully we'll be back up soon.
Great, thank you. Mr. Lake.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. My name is Ray Lake. I am the Chairman of the North Valley Citizens Advisory Board, and speaking in that capacity, I would like to mention that we, at a previous meeting, had requested to have some updates on the Waste Management contract and the way that was going. That was back in either August or October, I believe, and we did not have that. So this kind of happened as a surprise to us, and perhaps I'm lax in not reading the agendas carefully enough for these meetings. And so in that regard, that's all I have to say as the Chairman. For myself, I would like to say that I can remember back to when we originally started recycling, and it's been, I think, well over 20 years, that that was presented to us as customers, and we were told that we would save money by recycling all of our recyclables. And so that was put into effect, and what happened was we got a rate increase so they could buy new trucks. Now we have, instead of one truck going by once a week, we have one and a half trucks a week, I guess you would say, since one comes every other week. And we get probably another new truck because we have the new totes. So it bothers me that they're doing this. We have a rate increase. I do collect some social security, and this year I got a generous increase of exactly nothing. So this impacts me, it impacts all of my neighbors and everybody who lives in Washoe County. I would urge you to take another look at this. There was really no urgency, we had a contract that extended into 2020, and it just seems like it was done much faster than necessary without competitive bids. And again, I would urge you to take another look at this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lake.
Next up, we have Tammy Still, followed by Will Brown, and then Elise Weatherly.
Good morning, Ms. Good morning, my name is Tammy Still. I am talking to you about flooding in Lemon Valley. There is a package for each one of you, there is also a piece of paper on the front of it for you to sign showing that you received my packet. It includes pictures and AFSMA information. Issues with Lemon Valley are the corner of Tupelo and Water Ash, with the water coming down Water Ash and coming down from Tupelo from Matterhorn, converging in one pipe crossing Tupelo down to Down Water Ash is smaller than the diameter of Tupelo. This choked down the water, causing flooding and damage. There's pictures, they coordinate with each one of the issues. Number two, the job not being completed on the Water Ash Tupelo corner, i.e. replacing the pipe crossing Tupelo adjacent to Water Ash, and the crushed pipe caused the flooding on 11493 and 11497 Tupelo Street. Erosion of the embankment leaving sediment in the ditch of the residence of the Perkins on Water Ash, there's also pictures. Flooding of the corners of Lemon Drive and Water Ash, all the way down Lemon Drive and across the pedestrian walkway, is because there is only one outlet in the floodplain area out of 100 residential acres of water runoff. Water is running from Chigeti Sandpit Road and all the way down to Idaho, see pictures. Even if the water has crossed the designated floodplain area, there is an issue with the room for the water because the displacement of the floodplain area in the front of Lemon Valley due to the new building of warehouses and additional buildings in the floodplain area. The city of Reno, when they were going to Addex, told us that the lake would be dredged, and that has not occurred. We also have an issue with the employee of the county that has not been doing his job for the roadways and the waterways in this area. Solutions to mitigate the cost. Each and every convergence inlet and outlet should be larger than the pipe that is accessed to it. Each and every ditch must be maintained accordance to the picture you see of 11493 Tupelo Street. There should be grading of the ditches. They should be also graded to the access going out Lemon Drive and across Lemon Drive to the floodplain areas. The material should be put down and packed so that the sediment does not run off. Residence embankments and ditches should not be removed when they are doing the dredging and the grading. Also, it should be built back up if they do make this mistake. Also, there should be rock. Each and every access to Lemon Drive should always have a 24-inch diameter. And I will talk to you more about it, you can also read it there.
Thank you, Ms. Still.
Will Brown, followed by Elise Weatherly, and then Sam Denae.
Good morning, Mr. Brown.
Good morning. My name is Will Brown, and I live in Spanish Springs. In the fall of 1977, my brother and friend and I purchased a 40-acre parcel of land from Mr. Art Pastel. The property is located one-half mile north of La Posada in Spanish Springs, and I live there. My address is 2129 Cielo Vista Drive. In the spring of 1978, which is only three months later, Washoe County held a meeting and informed us that they felt there wasn't enough water available for the zoning assigned to this property. It was one dwelling unit per acre. In the meeting, they downzoned the property to one dwelling for every 10 acres. In less than two months, property west of Pyramid on what is now Dolores Drive was rezoned to developing, near Dolores Drive, and rezoned to one dwelling for one-third acre. All of the Desert Springs redevelopment was given this same zoning. It is served with groundwater and septic tanks on one-third acre parcels. I had planned to use this property for dwelling units for my family, for my children when they grew up. And my children are now fully grown, and they have children of their own. I have seen thousands of acres have been developed in Spanish Springs and built on one-third acre, one-half acre, one acre, and as much as two acres. And nothing has ever been done about rezoning or giving us our zoning back on my property, and it's been 40 years. Now, they said that they would look at the water situation, and they would restore the zoning to my property if the water was there. Well, the water's been there for about 20,000 residents, and it hasn't ever been rezoned. I can't understand the situation, and who's doing the planning? If this is true, you know, I predate practically everybody in Spanish Springs. And I'll tell you what, I'm losing my trust in my government out here.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Elise Weatherly, followed by Sam Denae, and then Garth Elliott.
Good morning, Elise Weatherly from Sun Valley, Nevada, Washoe County resident, and hopefully a voice for truth, justice, and the American way, righteousness, which is, by the way, that's actually in the Bible that our country was founded on. But I wanted to ask you guys, do you believe in warnings not to break the law? Just wondering about that, because we have a pretty good judicial system here. I've had a chance to go into a couple of court cases, I've watched Travis Lucia do some pretty good evidentiary support. What he does is he doesn't do things based on emotion, he does it based on facts. He gets evidence, he presents it. And so what I was wondering is, what do we base, when Marvin was let go, December 18th, 2015, from the Jan Evans Youth Center, because homosexuality was no longer deemed a sin, okay? So who decided that he could not go in there to a place where the kids, it's voluntary to come in there? Who decided, based on what document, that that is no longer a sin? If I could find out who could do that, I want to find out about gossip, because I'd like to have that removed, too, because I'm pretty, you know, I'm guilty of that, I'm guilty of a lot of things. So I was also at a court case where there was a young man that was being talked to by Judge Egan Walker, and Judge Walker told this child, in not too many words, that he couldn't have boyfriends unless he kept his grades up. And I wanted to speak about it, and I was not allowed to. And so my question is, why is the government allowed to say things that don't have any evidentiary support of what's okay and what's not okay, but Marvin Neil is not allowed to go in as a man of God and tell these kids a way of escape and a way of forgiveness? So what I'm accusing us of is breaking the law. Now, if we can just get together and talk about this and say, how'd you come to this conclusion, this decision, for this particular issue? What was it based on? You guys are here to make decisions based on evidence and data, right? But we're not allowed to talk about it because we're dismissed and we're diminished and that kind of stuff. But what I would ask you guys to do is please read the Book of Jeremiah, please. Because if this country was truly founded on that book, there's only one God, the one thing he does not like is pride and arrogance. And by the way, I'd like to say thank you to Donald Trump for applying for the most difficult job in the universe and being able and willing to go through that, okay? Thank you. But the problem is, is that we are not allowed to go in and tell these kids the truth and tell them what the way of escape is. And why do we not have that right when somebody else has the right to say something else? I think we should make decisions based on evidence. And the other thing, too, is I'd like to mandate some changes for Washoe County, and that's that we teach the children the difference between right and wrong, so maybe they don't, when they get out of the juvenile centers, they don't have to be back in the prison and in front of Travis Lucia and all these other things. Just a thought. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Mother.
Sam Denae, followed by Garth Elliott, and then Danny Claus.
Mr. Denae.
Sam Denae, Sam D-N-A Denae, that's me. The DNA, the heart and soul, body and mind of Reno government. I'm an Air Force Academy graduate, I spent many years flying fighters and bombers, defending our nation and the United States Constitution. And by the way, as a non-sequitur, I do not like these new chairs. The old ones were perfectly good, I don't know where the money came and why it was wasted on these chairs. They sit way too low to the floor, among other problems. Anyway, that's just sort of a non-sequitur, and I know Mr. Slaughter doesn't like to hear that, because he was the one who supported it at the admonition of the County Commissioners. I'm an Air Force Academy graduate, I spent many years flying fighters and bombers, and there's been a lot of controversy about these demonstrations going on and whether or not the people out there are saying the right things and legal things. The First Amendment was brought up to date in 1960 by the Supreme Court unanimously, and it says in plain English now, "As Americans, we have the profound national commitment to the principle that debate on public issues should be uninhibited, robust and wide open, and may well include vehement, caustic, and sometimes unpleasantly sharp attacks against government and public officials and against the media mouses." Well, I added that last part in there, but you know, nice smiley face back there. At any rate, I've been to all of these County Commission meetings and City Council meetings since 1994 minus three. I'm responsible for 92% of the good things about Reno, and anybody who wants to challenge that, come forward. I know Donald Trump is being accused of saying things and then finding out he wasn't telling the truth. Well, nobody ever wants to challenge the fact that I am responsible for 92% of the good things about Reno. But I'm here to tell you right now, it looks like Reno citizens really like, really like paying taxes. Yep, they keep voting in the same people, or maybe it isn't a trustworthy vote system, maybe there's rigging going on. They keep voting in people who just keep spending the taxes, for instance, on these chairs. The old chairs were perfectly good, nobody asked me, I sat in these chairs longer than all the other people added together, nobody asked me what I thought of the chairs, and I don't want to pick on the chairs, there's other bigger fish to fry. I noticed that, everybody likes the governor because he's raising the budget, everybody's happy with that. Everybody likes Edon because Edon uses all of our taxes to bring in tax breaks, to bring in all these other good people, these businesses that we need so badly so we can pay more taxes to get more schools and more money and more taxes and more schools, infinite taxes for schools, and I wish I had another three hours, but that is about all I have to say. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Denae.
Thank you over there, thank you, and you're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Denae.
A nice smiley face.
Garth Elliott, followed by Danny Claus, and then Donna Robinson.
Good morning, Mr. Elliott.
Good morning, Commissioners, good morning, Chairman. Garth Elliott, for the record. I'll try to go as easy as possible on you, that may be difficult. The blue has not been restored to the curb in front of the building, as of yet you're reminded about the loss of three or four ADA parking spaces in front of the building. I know it, we actually had none, I found one, but some people really need them, so if we could do something about that. We're going to go on to some prompts. Scales of justice. You, as Commissioners, have to make sure, or try your best in Washoe County to make sure that scale is up and not sliding around. Two things today on the Agenda Item 13 is an egregious sign ordinance that somehow we are forced to observe. That's an opportunity when that old scales of justice went completely upside down, but we'll address that in 13, and I hope we straighten that scale back up. Then we have over here, Washoe County. Keep the integrity that we expect of our county and our Commissioners at all times, and sometimes that does get askew, too. So do your best to keep that integrity that we expect from our Commissioners. So I'll go easy on you and make it short and sweet. Let's look forward to a great new year, a prosperous new year, and hopefully things are up for Washoe County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott.
Danny Claus, followed by Donna Robinson, and then Jeff Church.
My name is Danny Kleus. I live at 11630 Tupelo Street, Reno, Nevada, Lemon Valley. Talk about the drainage out there. First, I've been out there since 1979. We used to have the drains, our ditches always drained nicely until the county came out and said, "We're going to redesign them." We've had standing water in there ever since 1980 in our ditches. Now, since they put big culverts in on one side of the street, little culverts on the other side, now we have a drainage issue. One side drains, the other side does not. Next, where it empties out into the lake bed, it doesn't empty anymore, it backs up. All the sediment and everything that's been going through, county has never cleaned it out. That lake should have been dredged years ago. My parents have brought it up to the county before. They even had a petition about it back in the 80s with everybody's signature on it. Nothing has ever been done. You look at all the drainage that goes in there, there's three major ports out of the housing unit. One from the front of the valley, one in the middle, and one where we are at. You have at least eight blocks that all drain into one area. Nothing drains anymore. Something needs to be done about it. On top of that, our ditches do not get cleaned. They come out, they scrape a little bit out of the bottom to let us have more standing water in our ditches. We have weeds everywhere. Our roads are deteriorating because of the water all the time, because we have standing water out there. If you go out there right now, Lemon Valley Drive will be flooded if we have another bad section of rain. I hate to see what happens in the springtime, because that water doesn't go anywhere because of the sediment in that lake. It doesn't drain like other places. Needs to be dredged and something done. That's the easy way to do it. All you have to do is take some bulldozers, make another levee along some trailer parks, the trailer park, eliminate everything. It's not a high cost, because I was in the construction industry, and it wouldn't take that long. All that drought that we had, this problem could have been fixed. It could have been fixed years ago. I've seen that place flood at least 12 times that I lived there, and it's always the same areas. Something needs to be done.
Thank you, Mr. Please.
Donna Robinson, and then Jeff Church.
Good morning, Ms. Robinson.
Good morning, Commissioner Lucy. Good morning, Commissioners. I was here two weeks ago, and I showed you some devastating photos of homes, no other way. Yep. So what I'm here to do today is talk to you about, and if we can get these pictures up.
Yeah, they're bringing them up right now.
As you've heard from this nice lady and Danny, we have a serious issue out there. When this snow melts, we're going to have more homes that flood. We need to find a solution, and we need to find it fast. This is Idaho between Tupelo and Lemon, the ditch is full. The next one is the other side of the street, it is full. And, you know, we need to find a solution, we need to find it fast. When this water melts, we're going to, it's got to go somewhere. I have a neighbor who was informed by her insurance company, her house sank. She's got to have her house lifted. Her septic tank collapsed. Her well shorted out because she has so much water in the ground on her property. My horses are standing in six inches of muck, which is not healthy for their feet. We're all horse people out there, we're all part of the county. We would like to know, Commissioner Lucy, two weeks ago you asked for the maintenance schedule for the ditches out there. Have you seen that? No.
We can't respond.
Okay, so we would like some feedback out in the neighborhood. We want to know what is going to be done to fix this problem. No, we don't want to pay more taxes, we don't want to pay more money. This should have been fixed years ago, and it needs to be addressed. Everyone here that has spoke about the flood, either this week or two weeks ago, have some serious concerns. We're starting to lose money. We have to... We have to figure out what's going on with our houses. Are our houses sinking? Do we need to raise them? What is going to be done? As a taxpayer, and I have been in contact with David Solero, and he was nice enough to send his people out and unplug one of the culverts, but we need to work together and figure out a solution. And we need to do it now because in the spring, I think there's gonna be a lot more damage to a lot more properties. I had three and a half inches of snow from just the one night that it snowed. My land was already saturated with so much water that I permanently wear muck boots, you know muck boots are the big rubber ones that go up to your knees, to go out and take care of my animals. We ask you, the citizens of Washoe County are asking you, please, we beg you, we need a fix, and we need the communication back to us about what that fix is. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson.
Ms. Robinson, can I have those?
Yes.
We have Jeff Church next.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Church.
Good morning, my name is Jeff Church. I should have something here, I didn't realize that was working, so the clerk should have it to put up for your viewing pleasure. My name is Jeff Church. I run a new website, renotaxrevolt.com. I invite you to take a look at it. I'm here to speak right now on item number 16, which is commonly known as WC1, the massive sales increase. I noticed we don't have my overhead up here. I really wanted that up to make a point, and they're telling me they don't have it. I don't wanna beat a dead horse on WC1, but I wanna put on the record that I believe the enactment is illegal. The Washoe County Registrar of Voters admitted in a sworn declaration that she violated Nevada revised statute 295-121 while the judge found that there was substantial compliance that is currently on appeal to the Nevada, nope, not that one, sorry. It's the picture with the Reno Tax Revolt on it, I'm sorry. At any rate, the registrar admitted she voted it, and the judge's decision is on appeal to the Nevada Supreme Court. There will be more litigation to follow. I do wanna bring to your attention that the Washoe County School Board approved recently a multimillion dollar budget bonding issue for this WC1 that includes 2.8 million in salaries and administrator salaries. It also includes $50,000 in personal vehicles for the administrators to be able to drive to the site. God forbid that they could take out a car from the motor pool. I believe that those violate the letter and the spirit of the ballot measure. There we go, thank you, deputy. We love our Washoe County deputies. At any rate, they have $50,000 for automobiles. Notice you can buy one in Fernley a lot cheaper, that just came out, have you seen that on the TV? Again, the point here, renotaxrevolt.com. But I wanna put on the record that they're violating NRS 387 by that, which you're approving today, and two of you sit on the board for the Oversight Committee, is illegal expenditure of ballot money for non-WC1, non-bondable issues, violation of that. I think you have a fiduciary responsibility as the county commission that's going to oversee this to look at that, especially the two of you that sit on the Oversight Committee, but everybody here, your legal staff, et cetera. We don't need $50,000 for personal cars to come out of that WC1 money. Promises made and promises broken. They promised us in writing that that money would not be used for administrators, et cetera. We predicted it, if you attended any of the debates, I said it was gonna happen. I thought maybe they'd wait a year or two before the ink was dry, but they didn't. So now we're faced with it, and I ask you to look into it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Church.
Vicki Maltman is next.
Good morning, Ms. Maltman.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here today under public comment to talk to you about the Washoe, excuse me, Waste Management. I received a couple of informative letters and a postcard stating that if you did not want the single stream container to call in, I called in. I still got one. I said, "I really don't wanna pay more for this." I was told, "There is no charge." I don't think that that's completely true. In looking through the information from Waste Management that I received in a folder, it states that things have to be washed out before they're put in there, only certain items can go in there. It's a little confusing as to, gee, can I throw my newspaper in there, or can I put a certain kind of plastic or a certain kind of metal in there without being fined for putting the wrong item? I feel that having to wash things out is a waste of water. We've all been so concerned, of course, right now, we're not too concerned about water. I think we've all had plenty in our yards. I've had four foot because the ditches weren't cleaned out. But I don't believe that Waste Management lives up to their obligation. They take all the recycling to another state. Wouldn't be so bad if they just took it to another city in the county in the state of Nevada. But I don't appreciate having to sort my trash as to what can go into this tote that I didn't ask for and requested not to have delivered, but was anyway. I also, because of my husband's medical condition and my disability, have yard service. They've yet to pick up any of my aluminum cans that have been put in bags. They don't come in and pick it up, so we had to pay someone to haul it off and then pay to have it dumped, which irritates the heck out of me as a member of the public. You all have chosen basically to put politics before people, and I don't appreciate it. I didn't want single stream, I think it's a waste of time and energy of other utilities. I'm sorry, I just, I don't wanna have to pay more for my water bill, pay more for my waste requirements, and have to wash things out to throw them away. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maltman.
That is all the public comment.
All right. Seeing that we have no more public comment at this time, I'll bring it back to the board. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chair, next item is item four, which is Commissioner County Manager's announcements, reports, and updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas. I would like to make one announcement, and that is that the board will take a scheduled break at 12:30 for approximately one hour. So if we are on an item, we'll conclude that item at that time, but then take that break.
Great, thank you, Mr. Manager. Commissioner Jung.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Vis a vis Waste Management and our proposed new contract, I do want to compel staff to be certain that we are putting a balance between proper charges that is also not encouraging illegal dumping, which then we end up having to pay for to go pick up as well. So there has to be a balance, there's a sweet spot there in some way. And, you know, proper charges vis a vis how much waste you are creating, I think that that's, you should be charged for your waste, but not to an exorbitant amount that they will then choose to go out into the unincorporated county and dump said waste. So there's, I know that that's like magic and wizardry, but I think it's something that we need to be compelled to consider while we are still negotiating that. Another issue is that there is a, at the Mills Justice Center, there is a policy that stands today, and I would like to continue said policy, and that is President Barack Obama's portrait should be installed. He no longer is a sitting president. The policy there is no sitting presidents will be in the portraiture, so that needs to be done ASAP. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung.
Wait, wait, one more, sorry, 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 sorry. When it comes to Lemon Valley, can we ask legal if there's anything we can do to go back over what sounds like a developer mishap in not properly, you know, making sure the water drained? And what was the sign-off mechanism at that time that said this is an okay development? And have we updated that? Are there more checks and balances? Because we've all been forewarned that we're expecting the unincorporated county to grow, especially residential, but also commercial. So what are the sign-offs that, and what is the liability and for how long? If you have made a development that doesn't properly drain and hasn't properly drained, since it sounds like since the beginning, and then you get these different weather events that just exasperate it? I just wanna know, who owns what part of the liability for this? Because I wouldn't say it's all the county, I'd say it's the developer, and I'm pretty sure they're still in town as well, so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. Vice Chair Burke Bigler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I actually am gonna hold my Waste Management issues until we get to Waste Management, and then I can, I have a number of them, so we'll just hold till we get to that issue.
Okay.
I agree with Commissioner Jung, though, on the issue in Lemon Valley. This is an issue that's been going on for too long, and so I'd really like to know exactly, just second, Commissioner Jung's questions, because I think this is something that needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Herman.
I feel that there's some pretty important things going on here today, and I wanna hear mostly from the people in the audience. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, too, will hold my questions and comments about Waste Management. I have, they're both numerous and diverse, and so I think some salient points were brought up by the community, and I don't know whether there's an easy fix in any direction, but we certainly need to ask the questions and see what we need to do, including allowing competition. Maybe that's the key to get someone off the dime.
Great, we'll have that discussion, yes.
The other thing is, is I'd like staff, also like you had requested, as the same, I'd like to see a schedule of maintenance on ditches in the region, and I'd also like to see how we're prioritizing our cleanup, because I know we've got, there's some, all over town. It's not just Lemon Valley, it's not just Toll Road, it's not just Autumn Hills, it's not just Spanish Springs. It's all over the county. This was a region-wide event. And then I'd like to fold that conversation, Mr. Solero and Mr. Smith, back into flood management, and we're starting to talk about what a regional stormwater utility would potentially look like. And I'd like staff to kinda work back into that thought concept. And that's all I have today. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartung.
Well, at this time, for me, I have a few requests. First and foremost, out of the gate, as every other Commissioner has spoken this morning, I have some severe issues with Waste Management and the agreement that we have somewhat come to understand at this time, and what I feel that has been misunderstood, obviously, by Waste Management. What I would, I would ask staff, that I would, I would like a presentation from Washoe Regional Transportation Commission in regards to the southeast connector in Hidden Valley. We have seen a number of reports from, on the, in the news lately in regards to the mercury deposits there. Obviously, we'd like to see an update with, from them, what they're doing in the remediation process there. I've had a number of concerns from constituents in Hidden Valley. Also, I'd like to see, you know, before I make this request, I wanna make a comment. Mr. Solero, Mr. Smith, I know your staff has been extremely taxed over the last two weeks. First and foremost, I wanna thank them for their time and energy, and I know it's been challenging for all areas of the county who have been hit tremendously hard by this weather event that we've had. So first and foremost, I wanna get that out there on the record. Your staff has done what they can, with the resources that they've had available to them. I would like for Community Services to bring back a somewhat of a, what, how, a presentation in regards to how we go about, I know priority planning for snow plowing and different things. I know there's been a number of residents that have been concerned with, with snowplows and getting their streets and how they, where they fall in the grand scheme of things. So if I could get a better understanding for me, so that I could relay that to my constituents, I would appreciate that going forward. And also, in regards to the development issues that Commissioner Jung brought up in regards to flooding, it's something we need to address, not only in north valleys, but also in south valleys. I know we've had a number, a number of discussions specifically in regards to Toll Road and Geiger Grade. There's current discussions of development out there that would impact flooding and whatnot in that area, so I wanna have a discussion on that. And I'd like to get an update in regards to this current status of Toll Road and what the issues are with Toll Road. Had a number of concerned citizens discussing that, that current state of that road. At that time, at that, I have nothing else. Is there anything that got shaken loose by any of the Commissioners at this time? All right, seeing none, we're gonna close that and bring it back to Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chair, next item on your agenda is your consent, or your consent items, those are items 5A through 5D on your agenda.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything, any items in the consent agenda that the Commissioners would like to poll or have a discussion on?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hartung, second by Commissioner Burke Bigler. I have, do I have public comment?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Jeff Church.
Mr. Church.
On 5B.
Thank you.
Good morning again, for the record, Jeff Church, and now I get my little overhead up here if we get it to work. This is just on the Mono County Crime Lab thing. Seems like a very minor issue. I just wanna remind you that it is a good thing to pass that for Mono County to have crime lab services. However, everybody should be treated equally, they should pay for what they get and get what they pay for. And I bring that to your attention, and you may know where I'm segueing to, the city of Reno pays zero. We brought this to the attention of the County Commission around 2012, shock and dismay, they were gonna get right on it. Around 2014, we brought it again to the Commission, shock, dismay, didn't know anything about it. Why doesn't the city of Reno pay for crime lab when Mono County does? Again, renotaxrevolt.com, we intend to be a good watchdog for our taxpayer dollars, and we think that Reno should be paying their fair share, which is much more than Mono County, for the crime lab. So we ask you to look into that. So I have emails, and I'm not gonna name you by name, but you're sitting up here, and you said, "We're gonna get right on it, and we'll have it for you by December of 2015." Not 2016. December of 2015 came and went. December of 2016 has come and gone. You have not addressed the issue, to the best of my knowledge. If you have, it slipped, it slipped by my attention. And again, you wrote me emails, and you said, "We're gonna be on this." The Reno city should pay for the crime lab services, just like Sparks, Winnebago, Mono County, and everybody else, and I appreciate it if you'd look into that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Church.
There's no more public comment.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Manager.
I oppose to, either block vote or to item 10?
Well, you're gonna, let's do a block vote really quick. Ms. Vice Chair, if you would.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that we put in a block vote number 6, 7, 8, and 11.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favors?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Public comment, do we have public comment on those?
We also have to have them read.
Yes.
There is public comment from Elise Weatherly on item 7.
Okay, I'm gonna let the manager read those in first.
I'll read those, and then we can have public comment.
Thank you.
Item 6 is a award of bid number 3007-17 to purchase three replacement 66,000 GVWR truck cab chassis for an amount of $357,411, and bid number 3008-17 to purchase two replacement 60,000 GVWR truck cab chassis for $226,350 from the lowest responsible, responsive, responsible bidder. Staff recommends Sierra Freightliner Sterling Western Star Incorporated for the Community Service Department Operations Division. Item 7 is approval of an easement D grant of easement between Washoe County and Maria Hogan Camp Tang for a permanent, non-exclusive easement and right-of-way for ingress egress public and private utilities totaling 26,400 square feet on APN 066-070-05. Item 8 is approval of participating agreement of interpretive services between the Great Basin Institute, Washoe County Regional Parks and Open Space, and the US Department of Agriculture Forest Service Humboldt-Toyoa-Butte National Forest for continued cooperative visitor services and programming at the Galena Creek Visitor Center and Recreation Area, and authorize the Director of Community Service Department to sign the agreement on behalf of Washoe County, and further authorize Operations Division Director of the Community Service Department to annually approve the annual operating plan on behalf of Washoe County. And item 11 is discussion of possible action to accept the resignation and approved separation agreement with Washoe County Building Official Don Jepson effective January 24, 2017 in an amount of $185,000.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Public comment?
Hi, Elise Weatherly.
Hi, Elise Weatherly. I have a feeling on number 7, I did not realize until recently how important these easements are to building things. And I have a great way for you guys to get rid of me, so I don't come down here anymore and talk about Marvin Neil. That would be to help us get the easement built for the Sierra Nevada Teen Ranch, which the government has tried to stop with everything possible. Understand that the next thing we have to do is probably send a letter to Donald Trump to get this easement approved. Why it wasn't approved is kind of a question to me. So if easements are that important, then help us out. Help us out, get that Sierra Nevada Teen Ranch built, so let's get Marvin where he belongs. He won't have time for the Jan Evans Youth Center. And the other one was the number 11 for the separation agreement. All I have to say is, working in the payroll department, seeing a lot of separation agreements come up, I have a real issue with them. The issue being that they are designed by legal people that want to make them as vague as possible. They put things into them to where if you sign your name, then you may or may not be able to hold to that agreement. So I would just advise this guy to be really careful with those agreements. The other thing in the corporate world, $185,000, that's pretty unheard of. That's a lot of money to give somebody to go away. When I was offered a severance agreement after not really even being able to go back to work, and this has been a good thing, Gene Carano's taken care of me greatly, I think they offered me something like half a month's health insurance or something. If I would sign a document that as soon as I signed my name to it, I was going to have to lie. So I won't sign my name to a lie. And I hope that these things are designed in a way that makes sense, that are true, and that are easy to abide by. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Weatherly. All right. I have a motion by Commissioner Burke Bigler, second by Commissioner Jung. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Let the record show that Commissioner Jung was not available for the vote.
All right. At this time, we're going to take the agenda a little out of order. We're going to hear Agenda Item 10 at this time, and move Agenda Item 9 to the end of the meeting at this time. So we'll move it to the last. So at this time, Agenda Item 10. Mr. Manager.
Item 10 is updating possible direction staff on the Waste Management franchise agreement and possible related matters. And Assistant County Manager Kevin Schiller is here to present this item.
Good morning, Mr. Schiller.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the Commission. This item has been brought before you based on both your requests and several issues that have arisen since we approved the new franchise agreement tied to single stream. For purposes of the public, I wanted to make sure they know that at the podium in the back, there are copies of the staff report available, so they can follow along. And what I've tried to do today is really outline, kind of in a chronology, what the areas are that we've received complaints on and concerns related to both single stream and due to service and service issues tied to inclement weather. And some of this is going to be kind of reeducation. Other parts of it are going to be just strictly speaking to what we've done thus far. So in the implementation of single stream, I wanted to talk about three main pieces. One is the communication and notification of the program and the provision of the information to customers. We've met with Waste Management, and that pretty much can be said on each of these items, but specifically written notification was provided to the customers. But one of the key issues that we've identified is they did that post the holidays, because they didn't want it to get mixed in with the holiday mail. And then they also think there were some delays tied to it getting to residents specific to notification. And where that's somewhat critical was tied to routes, tied to changes, and tied to the options tied to the single stream. So that was a significant piece of information that we have received multiple calls on since they started the rollout. The second one has been flexibility. In the single stream contract, there are really...as you may recall from the last presentation in November, we had approved basically the use of 64-gallon containers and 64-gallon recycling containers, and then 96 and 96, or any combination thereof. We did not include a 32-gallon option in the rate structure. So we received several concerns related to customers wanting smaller containers. So in our meetings with Waste Management, one of the things that we did hear from specifically was that they can add a rate in for that, and then they can build that into the agreement per the request of the commissioners and customers. The other piece that was tied to this is there was approximately 7,000 customers across unincorporated Washoe County that didn't have designated bins. So in those Waste Management recycling bins, those that used their own cans had to have a level of base service. So another area of communication that we've determined to be difficult is that that base service...so most of those customers got 64-gallon trash bins and 64-gallon recycling bins as a base service level. They can change that after February 1st, but I think there's been some concerns on the communication of that and people even understanding what they initially got and why, and what their options were going to be. Third piece, which is probably...this will lead over into Waste Management, but I want to make...into Waste Management related to weather. But across all this, the largest issue has been accuracy of information in terms of customer service. So as you may recall, when I presented before, the customer service issue had been addressed with Mr. Martinelli and Waste Management. We had worked with their Phoenix Call Center, and we'd actually seen a significant drop on complaint. As you know, I'm kind of Mr. Trash, so I've dealt with a lot of the complaints over the last couple of years. So we did see a significant drop, so I want to make sure that's indicated. But once we went to the single string implementation in conjunction with the weather, it's kind of been nonstop. So the other key piece that we've been trying to deal with is just accuracy. So one of the questions that people have asked consistently is understanding how the process works related to the bags and the bag stickers. One thing I want to make sure I highlight in the communication to the public, and that is, if you look at the previous agreement with the ability to put out seven bags of trash, that really wasn't enforced through Waste Management. With the new agreement, and we've talked about this, larger parcel sizes versus smaller parcel sizes was a key challenge when we tried to look at what options we had. So what's occurred is the public does get their stickers, which is 25 stickers, and then they also get two months, one in the spring and one in the fall, where they essentially can put in...put out seven bags without any stickers for that full month. The key issue there that also has come up is rate structure. So there clearly has been a communication issue between the Phoenix Call Center and Reno tied to the rate structure. When we met with Waste Management, they were in the process of correcting that to ensure that that was completely accurate. Another piece tied to that was the senior tax rate and the senior discount. Senior tax rate actually expired several years ago. They were grandfathered in in the agreement. And what was applied by Waste Management was a graduated increase, so that they are well below the standard rate as it currently was approved in November. So likely, their ability as seniors to ever get to the rate that's been approved is probably highly unlikely, based on where they currently operate. The other piece is, we also could use a piece of the franchise fee component to subsidize if that was something you wanted to do. The other piece is opting out. A lot of questions have come up about, "Do I have to participate in single stream recycling?" The answer to that is no. They can opt out if that's what they wish to do. There is a mandatory piece of trash service, which is not tied to single stream recycling, but actually their trash service. So I do have representatives from the Health Department here if that comes up as a question. Okay, so quantifying all of that in single stream and the customer service and the accuracy, the other piece that has stepped into this has been our weather. So we probably have had as much or more complaints tied to trash service. Washoe Valley, Lemon Valley, actually, pretty much across unincorporated Washoe County, we've received significant complaints tied to the ability to get service, with this being in some customers' instances, the third week where they have not had trash service. In an effort to try to address this, when we met last week, we also brought in Dave Solero, our Community Services Director, because one of the issues that we're tending to see is both tied to messaging, tied to when aren't they going to receive service, and when is it going to get picked up? And also, that in conjunction with the timing with the plows and their standard routes. So one of the issues that we've heard clearly is, when we have a significant weather event, we are going to have delays in certain areas, which gets tied to plowing and access. Other piece that I've heard is that recycling trucks will come, but trash trucks won't. In meeting with Waste Management on that, the trash trucks weigh significantly more than the recycling trucks, so in some instances, recycling will be picked up. But the key complaint, again, has been the ability to understand when is their trash going to be picked up, once the roads are clear? And that seems to be the ongoing struggle that we've continued to have over the last three weeks. Another piece tied to this is obviously, and I just keep repeating myself, it's the customer service tied to the Arizona Call Center and our local call center. I want to make sure I tie in specifically to you that in that contract that you guys reviewed on the 29th and on Budsman was included in the scope of that contract, to address disputes and to address issues over a seven-day period if needed. But I will tell you, from a Washoe County perspective, we've been probably communicating with Waste Management daily over the past four weeks, trying to address both the individual complaints that are coming in, and also the educational component, to make sure that people understand that. When we met with Waste Management, they did indicate in both Reno and Sparks, they saw comparable issues tied to the single stream rollout. But I will say that I think it's been significantly compounded by the service issues that have come up over the past four weeks. I know we're going to have a break in the weather here, which is going to be positive for us, so hopefully we can catch up on that. But I think one of the issues that we need to simply look at is, in terms of a process and a route, how does it...how does supplemental trash get picked up when it's been canceled? Has one level and has some level of a policy and process? And then we have also engaged our communication staff to assist. So when we have a weather event, and let's say we're going to talk about an impending storm, where we're going to have significant plowing issues and/or difficulty, including that with Waste Management, so Waste Management's information is included, and so we can standardize that somewhat. I think the other piece tied to the inclement weather that has also kind of rid its head is, depending on what area you live in, you're going to see more significant impacts. So the other thing that CSD is working on is kind of, if you live here in the winter at these certain spots, this is what you can kind of expect. And one of the things we want to get from Waste Management, we want to be proactive. So that proactive, we need to have some level of a response, so that we can say, "If your trash wasn't picked up on Monday, it's anticipated it's going to be picked up within so many days with the weather change." I have received calls, several calls tied to the roads being clear and then the trash still not being picked up. So that's an issue that we continue to manage and kind of struggle with. And that's kind of just a summary at a high level of trending complaints. Again, primary piece being really communication, communication, communication. I do want to indicate that we have met with Waste Management. I also want to commend our staff, who have done...tried to do a really good job, even through the emergency operations, of trying to answer those questions, because it's been a pretty long period of time. And I know you've all received a lot of calls.
Thank you, Mr. Schiller. I'm going to kick this off today. I have to say, I'm extremely disappointed since our November meeting with Waste Management to today with what the rollout has looked like. It's been poorly executed. And first and foremost, a majority of Washoe County is rural count...is rural homes. It's parole homes, rural residents. It's got dirt roads. It's got challenges with it, come with it. We should have been given the extra understanding that that's going to be the challenges that the Waste Management was going to have. So far, all I've seen is that the office of the county manager has served as the Customer Service Department for Waste Management, and that extremely frustrates me. Can you tell me, Mr. County Manager, how many hours have you spent fielding phone calls through you and staff in regards to issues with Waste Management?
You know, I would equate it to probably about half of our time over the last several weeks, based on the services, yeah.
Thank you. And that's unacceptable. That is unacceptable by every, you know, imaginable step of an agreement. We are not here to be the Customer Service Department for Waste Management. They promised us non-Budsmans. They promised us service that was going to be constituted with, you know, what they had drawn up in the contract. None of that has been performed, at all, zero. And we continue to get...I know you brought it up earlier. I've talked to a number of my citizens up in the Galena area post the snowstorm. After our Community Services Department has plowed drives, they gave a blanket phone call to all the residents within the Galena area, saying, "We're not going to pick up trash on Monday." I want to know, and do we have somebody from the Health Department here today? Mr. Sack, if I could have you come down for a second? Good morning, Mr. Sack.
Morning, Commissioners.
Can you state your name for the record, please?
My name is Bob Sack. I'm Division Director of Environmental Health for the Washoe County Health District.
Thank you. Mr. Sack, can you state for me for the record, what is our current ordinance outlining trash and waste removal from residential areas?
We require garbage to be picked up once a week.
Once a week? Every seven days?
Every seven days.
Okay.
And that is specific to pretrusible garbage, green waste, those things that are susceptible to having flies.
Okay.
And that cuts short the life cycle to fly.
Okay. Now, is there any...is there any relation to temperature when it comes to that?
Oh, there definitely can be, yes.
Yeah, but I'm saying, there's nothing in our code that says whether it's...we don't have to pick up trash if it's below 20 degrees.
No.
Okay. So there's nothing that dictates...it's just seven days. Every seven days, trash should be removed from those residential residents. Okay. In some of our areas, have we had more than seven days co-pilot with some of that trash?
Yes, and historically, that has happened due to...
Inclement weather.
Inclement weather, bad events, something like that. And we have...the enforcement that we have is against...it would be against individual homeowners, and that is not the type of thing that we would take action on when, you know, inclement...we have flexibility when it comes to that, especially with, like, this time of year.
Right.
You know, the garbage is frozen.
Thank you. So that goes towards the specific ordinance. But what about when Waste Management calls and says they're not going to do it?
We have concerns, and we would definitely have concerns about that, and would want to know why, and what, you know, what's the soonest you're going to be able to get out there?
There's no repercussions, though?
Other than, they are a permitted hauler with us, and we could take some action against them, you know, regarding their hauling if they're not, you know, meeting their permit conditions. But again, you know, when it comes to inclement weather, we've always adopted a pretty flexible stance on that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sack. I'm going to give it over to some other commissioners at this time. Commissioner Burke Bigler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I have a number of issues, and I just...I want to say that I want to echo the chairman's comment that it's not our job as the commission, or our job as county staff, to take care of customer service problems for Waste Management. That's your job, and you're not doing it very well. And it's not just that you're not picking up. I've had...I can't tell you now the number, but at least 20 people contacted me and say...I called them, and they said, "Well, okay, we'll make an extra pickup. We'll make sure that we get it out there." And then they don't do it, and then they call on Tuesday and say, "You didn't come and pick it up." "Oh, well, it's too late now. It's Tuesday. We can't get anybody. We'll pick it up on Monday of next week." But then Monday of next week, they come, and they only pick up one container. Now, in a normal household, you fill that container in a week. And so now you've got two bags or whatever, you've got other stuff out there. They don't pick that up. And this is...it's gotten to the point where it's ridiculous. It's like there's no sense of responsibility for customer service, and that's creating a number of problems for us. That...I'm actually getting calls, frankly, from people who live in the city. A lot of my district is in the city. And so I'm actually getting calls, complaints from people who live in the city also. So it's not just happening in the county. But one thing is, one of the complaints I've received is, the recycling container, A, you can opt out, you don't have to get it. And yet, people...we had somebody testify today that they got it anyway, even though they called and said, "I don't want that." I have people who are complaining because the recycling container is too big. They can't fit both the recycling container and the regular trash container into the local area. And so they would like recycling containers that are smaller than the 32-gallon, because they don't use that much. And so I know there's a smaller trash container than, I think, the 32-gallon, isn't there?
96 gallons.
No, the little...there's a little...because the lady who lives right across the street from me has a little teeny-tiny one. She has this great big, huge recycling container. She's a widow. Trust me, she doesn't recycle that much. She doesn't need a thing that big. But that's in the city, so that's not our problem. But I've had people in the county calling me about that same issue. And I...we need to look at whether or not we can provide a smaller size for recycling or just pick it up. I have one gentleman who has tried for three weeks to get his blue top container picked up. Three weeks of calling us, calling us. On the fourth week now, thanks to Mr. Schiller, it finally got picked up yesterday. But, you know, he's been calling for three or four weeks to get this blue topped container picked up, and the response has been, "Oh, yeah, we'll be there," and then no one shows up. You know, it's, the customer service problems are just simply over the top. So then, secondly, one of the things that we talked about when we first started talking about this new franchise a year and a half ago, because I believe that's how long it was when we first started talking about this, one of the things we talked about is the difference between rural areas versus the city areas. And that, in the rural areas, they have large properties. They may have anywhere from an acre to 20 acres. They have more trees, particularly in Commissioner Lucy's district and in my district, down the Mayberry area, there's a lot, those properties have lots of trees. And so therefore, they have a lot more waste. Many of those people have purchased their own containers that are usable by the new trucks, so they can be picked up by the new trucks, but they can't use their own containers anymore. I have one gentleman, Dr. Kevin Linkus, who's a heart surgeon, who has five acres, and he was very frank with me, and he said, "The way I reduce my stress from having been in serious heart surgery all day long is I go home and do yard work." I identify that because that's what I do also. And he said, "Just my front yard fills up one, mowing my front yard fills up one container." He said, "There's no way, I can't, I have five acres that are fully landscaped, and yet I can't, there's no way to get it all picked up." So that's something, Mr. Schiller, that we need to look at. We need to look at how we're going to help those people who have larger yards, who have, you know, horses and need to dispose of their horse waste, or whatever it is you call that stuff. So that is really a problem for people who have much larger lots. And I know we talked about that at length because it's very important to all of us. You know, all, at least the four Commissioners on this side, Commissioner John, much of hers is not that way, although she does have a good part of Sun Valley, so she does have some issues also. But the four of us, we have people who have huge yards, huge lots, and yet they're being treated as if they were in the city, and that's a problem. So we need to have, that's got to be looked at before we can sign off on this agreement and figure out what we're going to do to help our constituents in that area. And then, again, one other issue that came to me this morning, this is actually in Commissioner Lucy's district, but I was working out at Sports West in the wee hours of the morning, and Mary Simmons, who's with the power company, came to me and said, "What are you guys doing about trash?" She said, "Used to be," where she lives, because she lives out in the
Sun Valley.
Lake area, yeah, in the South Valleys. And the truck would just drive up her gravel driveway, pick it up, and turn around right under her long gravel driveway. Now, apparently, she has to bring her stuff all the way out to the curb, and yet she, there is no curb because it's, you know, a rural street. But nobody's bothered to tell her that. She's called three or four times and said, "Is this what I'm going to have to do? Do I have to bring it all the way out?" And by the way, that's a half a mile down her, it's not really a driveway, it's a private road for several people. Those kinds of problems have got to be addressed. We have too many customers who live in those types of circumstances, and we really need to have that addressed because they are just very unhappy. I will tell you that I know there are a lot of people who are unhappy about single stream recycling, but there are a lot of people who are happy about it. I got lots of calls beforehand saying, "Reno's got single stream recycling, when are you guys going to get it to us? We really want it." So, yeah, we heard those complaints, and now we're hearing these complaints, but this is just too, it's just too far over the top. It's not just the snow, it's the whole greater picture of customer service and these issues. So I'll let it go at that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Burke Pigler.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Can I address one comment that Commissioner Burke Pigler made?
Go ahead.
I just want to get clarification. So in meeting with Waste Management, I know they've indicated flexibility to make changes. So on the larger parcel issue, I just want to make sure I clarify direction. Two things that were previously approved were additional service levels. So those individuals who need additional service levels can purchase those, along with the two free months, so they have the number of stickers. They also can put the stickers on their own cans, back to your statement on getting them picked up. So I just want to make sure I clarify that, and what I'm also hearing is, see what else we can do to create more flexibility on a larger parcel size.
Yes, that's exactly right. So let me tell you about Dr. Linkus's situation. So he purchased, I think, I don't remember the number now, I think it was four cans, in addition to the big can that was supplied, he purchased four cans that could, were the same exact size, that had the same configuration on it. And they were all picked up every week. Now, we've raised his prices, and we've told him we'll only pick up two, and he has to get both of them from Waste Management. That's not a very good customer service approach. And so, I mean, that's a simplistic issue that needs to be addressed. These customers who went out of their way to go out and purchase their own containers, now we've raised their rates, and we're saying, "Oh, well, you know, you can't use your own container, and by the way, we're only going to pick up two containers in front of your house." Where before we raised your rates, we picked up four or five. That's just an issue that simply has to be addressed. Because I, trust me, Dr. Linkus is the one who called me, he's not the only one who's having this problem.
Thank you, Mr. Schiller. Commissioner Herman.
Yes, there's a lot of problems out there. For about a year and a half, I kept nagging about the rural areas, and I wasn't happy with the results of our, you know, contract, and so I voted against it when it came up. But personally, I have to walk about a mile with my garbage cans, you know, or take the tractor. The road isn't all torn up from blood. But anyhow, and I tried to opt out, but the postcard came too late, and the deadline was already done. There's a question I still have, I don't think I felt good about the answer I got when I asked it before. And it was about District Five now has quite a bit of industrial, and I see what our price is going to be, and I see that in Sparks, they have industrial too, but their fees are only 54, 45 a quarter, and ours are going to be way up there, close to 80. So that didn't seem quite right. Might have to kind of relook at that one. So with the opt-out thing, okay. So anyhow, I hope we can get these things all worked out, but I think we better go back to the drawing board and start on it. So that's my opinion.
Thank you, Commissioner Herman. Commissioner Hardtime.
Thank you. Many of my issues have already been articulated, and so I'll try not to rehash what the other Commissioners have already said, although to restate, I have played customer service rep holidays, evenings, Sundays, and I'm happy to work when I need to work. That's the job we signed up for, 24/7, 365, I get it. But it's very frustrating for me because we don't have access to the same level of customer service with Waste Management. And I had one customer of yours, a constituent, who said he was on hold for over 30 minutes, and then they finally just hung up on him. And so that was frustrating for him, obviously, and very frustrating for me because there's nothing that I can do with that. And by the way, that's the Phoenix Call Center. And, you know, there's an old saying, "Hey, it doesn't matter what it looks like at your place because it looks good from my house." And from Phoenix, everything looks good in northern Nevada. So that's a real issue for me, that we don't have, as we had many years ago, when the Caramellows owned Independent Sanitation, and their customer service, you know, it was just down on Vassar. That's where their little call center was. And when you called them, that's where you were talking to somebody who was right there. I also had a customer who could not get pickup for three weeks, and she had requested a credit on her account. And so that was denied, of course. And then when I talked to Mr. Martinelli about that, he said, "Well, what happens when we pick up her garbage?" But what happened was, is when they picked up her garbage after three weeks, they only took one can.
Bless you.
So there's obviously a disconnect between what the route driver states. Is this getting louder? It seems what, there's a disconnect between what the route driver states should be done and what management states should be done, or the route driver physically does versus what the manager tells them to do. And I know that there was some issues in terms of route drivers and et cetera. With all due respect, guys, that's not our problem. That's an internal management issue that you guys need to solve, but again, we're playing customer service reps. So maybe what we need to do, and part of Spanish Springs is very suburban, not rural in nature. So the south end of the valley is, in the unincorporated, is suburban, smaller lots. I actually have gotten no calls from those guys, none. When you get into the larger lots on the west side of the valley, I've gotten no calls from them in terms of service, other than things like not being able to reconcile issues with bills, simple things, not related to single stream. And needing pickup at a gate because someone's disabled and they didn't, you know, Waste Management was not able to accommodate that, and when they did the call center, again, customer service, the call center didn't seem to relay those issues to the local management and then, of course, the route driver. The bigger issues have come from my larger parcel owners. I have an acre plus, but I don't have a horse. So the 96 gallon container is fine for me. It works out well. It was a little tight when our kids were around full-time, but not so much anymore. However, the people in my neighborhood who have horses are having an issue. And so maybe what we need to do is create an equestrian package. Something where you deal specifically with people who have horses. You know, the idea that, and by the way, I applaud this, people who go out and muck out their stalls every week, God bless you. I recognize the desire to own a horse, and, you know, I love hay burners, but I wouldn't have the drive to go out and muck out those stalls all the time. And so those of you who are doing that constantly and trying to dispose of it properly, I understand. So we definitely need to come up with a way that they can be serviced. One of the suggestions, Commissioner Lucy and I were talking, he has some of the same issues, there are no transfer stations either in the south or in the north, in Spanish Springs. And then a lot of people don't have access to trailers and et cetera, so it's a tough scenario, and I don't know if there's an easy solve. The problem comes back to when we give a franchise agreement, we give exclusivity. And so when there's an issue, they can't call somebody else and say, "You know what? I don't want to use this particular company anymore, I'm going to use this company." And when there's not a buffet of choices for people from smaller parcels to large parcels, that's, you know, that's where you get some tension. And of course, and look, and I get this, weather-related issues where you cannot pick somebody up, and I understand, if you drive up a rural road and you bury that truck up to the axles, you've now got to get a wrecker out there and pull it out, and then you're also responsible to probably fix that road. So they're just, you know, perhaps it's communication, maybe during those inclement times, you have other ways where people, you know, you go out and you drop off a dumpster up in the Highlands where people can get their, you know, do their own garbage. I don't know the answers. I truly don't know the answers. That's why I'm asking for Waste Management and staff to come back with some solutions. And the other, my final thought and statement will be, the problem of trying to say, "Well, everybody has to pay the same." You got to, Commissioner Burke Pigler has a guy with five acres, and then I've got a guy down at the south end of Spanish Springs who's got, you know, a 10,000 square foot lot, and they're going to pay the same. So there's, you know, there has to be some equity for those folks also that do not need the additional services that may be offered. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for indulging me.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Burke. Hardtime, sorry. Yeah, I apologize, I'm fighting illness here today, so I'm trying to be with you as much as I possibly can. Commissioner, I mean, Assistant County Manager Schiller, can you explain to me, is there a current limit on toters available that residents can upgrade in service?
Limit?
How many, I mean, I've talked to a number of citizens that said they've had five, six, seven toters, a number of toters in the past, and now that they've gone, we've changed the service, they're only being allowed an additional garbage, one, so a total of two garbage toters.
Yeah, I think, and Waste Management can address this because they're here, but I think the issue with those totes, back to Commissioner Burke Pigler's comment, is if you're having additional totes, you can either upgrade your service level, or you can put stickers on those so that they get picked up, but I'll defer to Waste Management if I'm not correct.
And before we, is there somebody from, I mean, I know we have Waste Management staff here, are there Waste Management staff here that are decision makers that we can, with us today? I know Mr. Martinelli is not with us in the audience. Is there somebody of his equal stature or somebody from Phoenix today with us?
I don't believe so. I do have one of the supervisors for operations here, and their communications PIO, they're both here.
All right. Well, ladies and gentlemen, please come to the podium. We have some questions for you. Thank you. State your name for the record, please.
My name's Sam Odison. I'm the district manager for Reno Disposal.
Hi, Sam.
Hi. My name is Kendra Costalucky. I am the communications specialist for Waste Management.
Good morning. I'm going to kick this off once again, questions for you. So, Sam, questions in regards to toters?
Sure. To answer your question, residents are allowed to order as many toters as they want as additional toters. So you could have up to 100 toters if that's what you wanted.
And they pay the cost of that toter, is, what's, is that $21 for every toter? Or what's the, how does that work out?
I'd have to look at the exact rate sheet. The initial fee, I believe, is about $21 a month, and then each additional toter, I believe, is around $5 or $6 extra.
Okay.
So it's not $20 per toter.
And to clarify, Assistant County Manager Schiller's comments, he did say that residents could put a sticker on their can, and they would remove that can, or they would dump that can for them?
Yeah, yeah, we've allowed customers to do that. The only caveat with that is, is our trucks are not gentle with cans, that's why we usually like them to use our cans. And so when we damage or destroy their cans, they expect us to pay for them.
Okay. All right. And so those stickers, I'm assuming your driver gets out and removes that sticker every time that that's, okay.
Yes.
All right. All right. Is there questions, any other questions for Waste Management? Commissioner Hardtime.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Schiller, and Sam. Didn't Mr. Martinelli say that people would still be able to use their own cans? Or am I?
I don't think so.
It was only Waste Management approved, or supplied, rather?
That's what I was under the impression.
Was that, am I, is that all it was, Mr. Schiller?
Yeah, it's Waste Management's cans only.
It's Waste Management cans only? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner John.
Thank you, this is an operations question. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And you might not know the thinking that went into this, but when the rental containers were issued and encouraged to be used, it also cut down on personnel costs because people don't have to get out, your, your drivers don't have to get out and manually take care of them. It also gets away from a less likely workers' comp issue, right, hurting their back or whatever. So it seems like to me, and I'd have to see the metrics, but just from my gut, if you're reducing labor costs on the backs of customers, said customers should be getting a break because we're helping you reduce these costs, for very good jobs, by the way. I mean, these are, these are jobs you want to have in this community, you know? In terms of a blue collar job, they're, well, they're good. So, has any, do you know anything about, if anybody has thought into that, you know, for, the customers are doing your work even harder and better, keeping you out of workers' comp issues and keeping them labor, you know, it's going to go faster as well, right? Is there a given, and, and give and take there, or?
Sure. Obviously, our first concern is the safety of our, our drivers, and, and these automated trucks make a lot less manual labor for them. The trade-off is in, the trucks are much more expensive now. An average garbage truck is about $450,000. And to go to this program, we need, we have ordered probably upwards of 50 new trucks in the last three or four years. So that's where the trade-off is in the labor.
Okay. If, if I could see that data in analytics, I'd appreciate it. I, I trust you, but I want to verify.
Sure. I'll see what I can get you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Just for the record, Greg Martinelli wanted to express his apologies for not being able to be here today. And personally, I want to thank you guys for basically acting as, as customer service reps. It's been a tough month for us with the weather. I, I can tell you, I've worked a lot of long days. Our drivers have worked a lot of long days. We are trying our best to service the customers as best we can.
Great. Sam, I have some more questions for you, too.
Sure.
For some of our citizens, I know for Commissioner Herman, myself, Commissioner Burke Bigler, and Commissioner Hardtong, we have citizens that have, as we've heard tonight, today, long driveways, and we're going to hear a lot more here shortly. What have we, what was the communications plan with your drivers from the operations in regards to when these drivers used to travel down these driveways in these long public, private roads? Why the change?
We've seen a significant increase in damage complaints to private property, to where our trucks are 50,000, 55,000 pounds, and causing severe damage to private roads that we're ending up having to pay for. So our company policy is we don't service, and in all of our contracts, is we don't drive down private drives to service driveways. The communication process is, we like to reach out to the customer, let them know the can needs to be curbside or in a location that's easily accessible for us.
Okay. Has that communication, because it sounds like to me, from the comments that I've heard and, and the concerns that I've heard, that that communication hasn't transpired yet. And if it hasn't transpired, when does that plan on transpiring? Because we've rolled out new cans, driven down these private roads to drop off blue totes and green totes, we haven't told them that they're not going to have to push that can all the way out to the road. When does that communication plan to transpire?
So the direction I've given my managers is we'll continue to do it until we inform them. And if that hasn't been done, that's, like you said, a disconnect between the managers and the drivers there.
Well, just another reason why I get to play customer service representative for Waste Management on my time. Another issue I have is, when you issue a customer service announcement to a certain area, saying you're not going to service that area, what is the contingency plan that Waste Management has in place to go and pick up that trash that they missed?
Our normal, our normal plan is it will go back the next day, or the day after, depending on if it's a weather-related event. With, with the severe weather we've had, the areas such as Upper Galena, Toll Road, those areas that are just impassable, is we'll return on the next service day. Right now, we're having trouble just getting all the, all the customer service on every given day. If we start going back the next day or the day after, it'll just put those customers for today. It'll impede their schedule.
Okay. And bear with me, and I, I know this is not, Sam, this isn't your issue, and this goes much, much higher than you. Waste Management is a very, very large corporation here in the United States, one of the largest corporations in the world. Thank you very much. I would think that they would have some sort of a contingency fund or fund set aside that if there were other haulers within the area, that they would employ other haulers to make sure that they were able to maintain service, and make sure that things were getting addressed, but it doesn't sound like it. A number of my constituents have said now they're going on almost three weeks, if not three weeks plus, because for whatever reason, Waste Management, due to the inclement weather, which I understand, we're not in control of that, has not been, still has not been serviced. And there has been no, there's been no communication, when they've reached out to Waste Management in Phoenix, which blows my mind, while we have a call center in Phoenix, there has been nothing done. So, I want to know where the contingency plan is to service these people that have been missing trash for service for three weeks. That's unacceptable. It's unacceptable by our health department, it's unacceptable by this county, and it should be unacceptable by you, as just customer service, servicing the people that pay the bills. Where is that, where is that due responsibility to them? So I need to know from some sort of decision-maker how this is going to be rectified, and how this is going to be taken care of. Is there any other questions at this time? We're going to take, I don't, what's that?
She was talking.
Oh. This, can we get into public comment, Commissioner Hardtong?
Just one, just one last thing.
Okay, thank you.
And this, and, and I don't know whether this has occurred in other areas, but Waste Management encouraged some customers in the, this upper end of Spanish Springs, the rural area, to put their trash in bags. And then what happened was animals got into those bags, and it was strewn everywhere, and through no fault of, of theirs, and I understand Waste Management, it's not their fault that there's wild animals out there, however, that's what, they did what they were instructed to do by Waste Management. And then Waste Management, of course, they're not going to pick up any of that. They're, they're only going to pick up what, what they can, and so this, this huge mess was left, and there was, I had a number of calls on that. So I, I, I'm with you, Commissioner Lucy, I don't know what, I don't know what to make of this, and I, and, and I would, I would respectfully disagree only with one of your statements, your time, our time is their time.
That's exactly right.
So we're now, we're now taking their time to solve the problems, not our own personal time, their time that we should be working on other issues, because we're, we're public servants. And so, it, we have spent an inordinate amount of time on this, Sam, and it, it's frustrating, as you can tell, for us. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. At this time, we're going to open this up to public comment, so Madam Clerk, will you call public comment, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Sam.
Gary Dirks, followed by Claudia Watkins, and then Nikki Berry.
Good morning, Mr. Dirks.
Good morning. My name is Gary Dirks. I live out in Washoe Valley. And we have a little committee, a group of people out there called Eastlake North or something like that. Anyway, these folks are really upset with Waste Management. The biggest problem I see with Waste Management is a total, complete lack of communications. You know, if I ran a business the way they did, I'd be out of business without any time flat. There's no competition, so they don't really have to communicate with me. The best communications they've got, if you stop and talk to the drivers, the driver will tell you what the company's going to do, but the company won't tell us. We've been told there's going to be rate increases. If so, when and how much? Nobody will tell you. If you call Waste Management, you're not going to get an answer. It's just 24 stickers. You give me 24 stickers, I live on a little over an acre, at the end of a month, I'm going to use those 24 stickers. So what am I going to do the rest of the time? 24 stickers is just not, not right. They've got my property put in the same group as a house in Reno. It just ain't going to work. We've got, every, every summer, every, we have to clean our property off because, to keep down fire risk. What am I going to do with that property? If I put it out there in the street, Waste Management ain't going to pick it up. And they have not told us that they'll only pick up one can. The people out there still do not know that they can't do like they did three weeks ago and put out three or four cans or whatever. All they do is they come back and the, the property is still there, and they call Waste Management, and they don't get an answer. So if they're going to make changes, they got to talk to us, tell us. But they don't. Thank you for your time, folks.
Thank you, Mr. Dirks.
Claudia Watkins, followed by Nikki Berry, and then Ray Lake.
Good morning again.
Hello again, Ms. Watkins.
Shame on Waste Management. Shame on them. Who do they think they are? Sorry? Oh, shame on Waste Management. Shame on them. Who do they think they are to take seven totes from me and drop it to one? They're greedy, they don't care, and they have no competition. Competition is fantastic. It's healthy. They have none. Lip service, lip service, lip service, and it's not just communication. Who do they think they are to do that to people that live on larger properties? You can't tell me they didn't think about it. They're one of the largest corporations in America. Who do they think they are? The great little labels you get to put on there, good for 30, 30 gallons. 96 gallon tote, that's at least three a day, or a pickup time. That would be gone the first week for them to pick up what they used to pick up. That's just not going to work. And supposedly, what I was told, was it's for their little black garbage bags that you buy at the store. Horse manure doesn't stay in there real well. It's not going to work. We're not cities, we're not city of Reno, we're not city of Sparks. We have our property, and we want to keep it nice, but it's not going to happen. I guarantee you, people are going to be dumping in the hills, more than they already do. They are furious. Going to the transfer station, great. If I want to pay $100 to $120 to dump my dump trailer that I bought for horse manure, that's ridiculous. Plus to pay on top of this for what used to be service? I beg of you guys not to go along with this, and Waste Management, just shame on them. My other question, and I don't understand how this all works, why is this being enforced now, if it's not a done deal? Why am I having not to put out my three garbage cans that they asked me to buy for my horse manure, that I spent over $300 for? Why can I not use those now? Why can I not put out my seven totes that I used to do? It's not a done deal. I thought this was a done deal. It's not. Why am I having to do that now? No recourse. There's no solution. But why? I mean, is there not a moratorium? Does there have to be a civil lawsuit brought? I don't understand why I have to do this and my neighbors have to do this now. Well, and it's not a done deal. That's, that's weird. Just once again, ask you, don't forget us. Don't forget us, people that live in the county, that have larger properties, that have manure, that want to keep our places looking nice. And shame on Waste Management. Who do they think they are?
Thank you, Ms. Watkins.
Nikki Berry, followed by Ray Lake, and then Roger Edwards.
Good morning, Ms. Berry.
Good morning, Commissioner Chair Lucy, and members of the county commission, and county manager, and the DA's office. My name is Nikki Berry, and I own a one-acre parcel on, in, out in Lemon Valley. The new contract for Waste Management is what I'm here to speak about. It does not provide sufficient needs for us. Waste Management states that they will only dispose of what is in the green cans. They have provided at least me with 25 stickers. That is insufficient during times when I need to clear my property and dispose of what is in my property, as well as what is in my ditches. If I do not dispose of the waste, which are the weeds that grow on my property and in the ditches, if, when it rains, the rain will be unable to freely move through the ditches, and flooding will increase. My area where I live is in Tupelo, in Arizona area. I have an overflow in the back of my property, and as the water comes down, I have it kind of divert in the back of my property, so my neighbors do not suffer from flooding. I, I clean my ditches on my own time to make sure that I do my part in my community. We have further needs based on Lemon, based out in Lemon Valley. I have provided my contact information, and you guys are welcome to make an appointment to come out and walk my property, so you can understand what our needs are out there. In addition, there is no known community advisory board out in Lemon Valley, and I request that you please consider implementing one, so I can become a member of that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Berry.
Ray Lake, followed by Roger Edwards, and then Tom Broome.
Good morning again, Commissioners. My name is Ray Lake, and for the lady who just stepped away from the microphone, I am the chair of the North Valleys Citizens Advisory Board, and we will have a meeting on February 13th at the North Valleys Community Center. I invite her to attend. That said, I wanted to talk a little bit about some rumors that I've heard, and having Waste Management here today, maybe they can be dispelled. But to start with, we've been told that the goal is to recycle 35% of our waste. I'm not sure that I can even reach that goal on myself, but it's, it seems that the reason for that, part of the reason for that is to avoid filling up the landfill at the Mustang Dump, or Lockwood, I guess it's Lockwood these days. It, I, I have to wonder, who is the major beneficiary for that? It seems that, to a certain extent, we do, but I guess we also import trash from California, so Waste Management benefits from that. And I would wonder, do we collect any franchise fees for that? The other, the rumor that I guess I would like dispelled is, I've heard that, due to the price of recyclables on the market these days, that the, the recycling is not actually being done, that it's being diverted back into the normal trash stream and taken out to the dump. So I don't have the resources to confirm that. It's just something that I've heard, and perhaps the folks here can dispel those rumors. It also looks like part of the reason for this is to prevent dumping in the desert, and I, I really fail to see how that is prevented or discouraged, the way things are going. You can't, they won't pick up a, a large piece of equipment, or a sofa, or anything like that. It has to be taken to the transfer station. So I, I don't really see a benefit to this, and I do encourage you to pursue this further. I am a little bit encouraged by seeing the pain spread around that side of the room also, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lake.
Roger Edwards, followed by Tom Broome, and then Wes Cameron.
Good morning, Mr. Edwards.
Good afternoon, Roger Edwards. I emailed all you guys with my specifics, but I have to touch on just a couple of them. One size does not fit all. And, and unfortunately, or fortunately, I thought before, having a really big trash service provider would be better for the county. And then we get, at least the four of you know, about having rural constituents, it doesn't fit all, and as much as they try, and my, I'm a Golden Valley guy, we've had solid waste issues out there for 30 years or more, and I'm the manager of a, our own community compost pile to try to deal with some of the manure issues out there. But even at 60 or 70 yards per time, and I do that like twice a year, we're not even scratching the surface. We've got hundreds of horses just in Golden Valley. And, you know, I think one of the main problems, and I don't know how this is ever solved, is no competition. It was touched on in discussions today, but we've had a lot of little competing trash companies that have come and gone. They get about halfway decent in size, and Waste Management buys them out, buys their trucks, hires their people, repaints the trucks, and away they go. Now, there's nothing much you can do about them when you're talking about a company as big as Waste Management is, and I've seen their trucks and And I've seen their trucks in Puerto Rico, by the way. It's not just Washoe County. So, you know, you've got to deal with the 800-pound gorilla in the room, and that's always tough. And you know where I've been, and I've been dealing with these kind of issues too. I just would like to make, maybe the first time today, a suggestion that might help this. It can't just be you guys and staff. You need to get a task force, like myself and the guy from Washoe Valley and some of the folks out in Spanish Springs and so forth that deal with this all the time, that can bring the citizens, the impacted part of the argument, to a meeting with everybody. And it can be staff, and then maybe we can hammer something out. It can't be looking in the abstract, and it can't be looking at a service provider that can write the contract that the county requires, still may not, as we're seeing now, meet the actual requirements of the constituents. I'd volunteer for that working group, and, you know, we need to do something different. And I called, you know, I called Waste Management, and one of the few times I actually got through to somebody in Phoenix, by the way, which I didn't know, I still thought they were down on Vassar. And I said, "Well, you know, my neighborhood out in Golden Valley, we're having this problem." So anyway, it's tough, but we can solve it, but you've got to get the field people in.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards.
Tom Broome, followed by Wes Cameron, and then Donna Robinson.
Good morning. Most everything that I wrote down is all been said. We've had the same issues. We think it's crazy that we have to talk to Phoenix.
Sorry, to interrupt.
Tom Broome.
Thank you.
Sorry. We think it's crazy we have to talk to Phoenix. None of our issues have been weather-related. I think that's kind of sneaking in, is kind of a scapegoat on this deal. There has been some weather issues, but that has nothing to do with this stuff. I think that these people have shown who they are. Before this deal, I think they got the city. I think they were on one of the low-hanging fruit shows on TV where they lied about this and that, and then they were less than truthful about buying up, I think, the 1-800-GOT-JUNK. So I think they've shown who they are. They don't care, because this is monopoly now. They really don't care about, so I think the only solution is when you have people like this that can't behave, you've got to do something. I mean, it's not fair to you guys or anybody else. There's got to be some sort of punishment or a code change to say, "If you don't do this," because they've already shown this is going to go away. They're not going to get any better, because there's nothing to incentivize them to do that. So I think the only thing to keep everybody from calling you guys and for us having to deal with this is maybe a code change of some kind. Or make it easier for some of these startups to come in and have some competition, because it looks to me like they're just not going to behave. They have the ability to let us know things. We just recently had a day change. We used to be on Fridays, now we're on Mondays. When they wanted us to know that, we got the flyer in the mail. They park trucks on the east side and the west side of Washoe Valley, let everybody know with big signs that say, "Your day has changed." So they have the ability to do that when they want us to know something, but when they don't care, it doesn't make any difference. Two weeks ago, they left all our cans out. We stopped the driver and said, "What's going on?" He said, "They told us don't take access anymore." It took eight emails back, and of course, they do the same thing. I suspect they give their people a script that says, "If people call, tell them that we'll come back the next day." We know that's a lie. They're just bad actors, and I think you guys are going to have to do something different than negotiate with them, because they just, they appear that they can't behave. So, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Wes Cameron, followed by Donna Robinson, and then Pete Todoroff.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. Hi, Jeannie. We live in the orphaned county of Washoe, Palomino Valley.
Mr. Cameron, can you state your name?
I'm sorry, Wes Cameron. I lived in the city of Las Vegas for 38 years and moved up here with my son and my family. Do you know that Republic Services in Las Vegas picks up trash two times a week? Do you know that if you pay your trash bill, you can go to a transfer station and dump for free? You can call Republic Services, they'll come out and pick up your washing machine, dryer, big appliance, whatever. You don't have to worry about it. And do you know that their rates are cheaper than they are here? Talk about competition, Mr. Hartong. I couldn't agree with you more. I heard that Republic had asked to come up here, and they were working on it, but I guess that's been thrown out. But I think the idea of what we're going through with Waste Management is absolutely ridiculous. I live on 41 acres. I clean my yard. I take pride in my yard. I don't need my trash to be sitting out for three damn weeks and telling me that I'm not going to pick you up for another week if the weather is right. Winnebago, even though it doesn't ever get plowed, unfortunately, because the county doesn't care about us orphans out there, and Jeannie knows for sure. Do you know that that's been dry for five days and nobody bothered to come out with a truck? Why can't they have the contingency plan of having enough guys to come out when the sun is out to pick up the trash? Why do we have to wait a week? It is absolutely asinine. And for you guys to sign this contract without looking at other companies is ridiculous. Like I say, I lived in Vegas for 38 years, never had a problem with Republic. They cared about their people. They cared about their customers. What happened since we didn't get trash picked up for three weeks? Is anybody going to give me a discount on my bill? No, they're going to lean the house because I don't pay my bill. But I'm paying for service, and if they're not giving me service, why do we have to pay for it? That's the question. Waste Management needs to be competitive with other companies, and you guys have got to let them in so they can be and care about the people that we pay for, your salaries and their money. This is ridiculous. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Donna Robinson, and then Pete Todoroff.
Hi again, Commissioners.
Hello again.
My name is Donna Robinson. I live at 11625 Tupelo Street in Lemon Valley. And I wasn't originally going to speak about the trash. I actually didn't even know what was going on. But some interesting things have been brought to light today. And I hope that you will, and I can see that you're honestly looking at this and will consider before approving any contract with Waste Management. I like the idea of an equine package. I have three horses. My horses are law enforcement horses. We use them for public service and community service. I have three horses. All the years I've lived there, I've been told, "Oh, you can't put your horse manure in your trash." So either I have to bag it up and hide it, or what I do is I go and take it to where I can or give it to neighbors who want it for fertilizer. So I like the idea of an equine package. The problem with horse manure out in these areas, contaminated water. Because of the flooding, four houses on my block alone have contaminated water with coliform bacteria and/or E. coli. When my father purchased a house in Cold Springs and we set up his trash thing and he, we moved him in, we put extra trash out by the thing, the driver flat-out refused to pick up the extra stuff. He says, "You're not paying for it." My father is retired. He is almost 80 years old, and so we had to make special trips to dump the boxes. The Lemon Valley Arena, there's two big dumpsters there. I don't know how many times, when I've been riding there, I have seen people come up and dump their home trash in those dumpsters, and therefore, manure only. So those that are trying to keep the park clean can't use them because they're full of chairs, tables, clothing, and so on, because people don't want to pay the extra money. I have a neighbor who will remain anonymous, because I don't want to get her in trouble, who takes care of her own trash. Unfortunately, sometimes it ends up in our yards on windy days. So seriously, we want to put it back on you, as I assume I'm speaking for everyone here. Please, take into consideration, before you approve any contract, I think competition's great and it needs to be looked at seriously. Thank you for your time.
Pete Todoroff.
Mr. Todoroff.
Yes, my name is Pete Todoroff. I'm the chairman of the Incline Village Crystal Bay Cab, and I have an email that I received from one of my people up there in Incline, and I think this is pretty bad. First of all, I want to mention, I've traveled every state in the United States. Waste Management has a monopoly in every single state. I've seen them in every single state. And the competition is exactly right. That's what's needed up here, so maybe we can get something done. Okay, this person wrote to me, "When I got back on Thursday after lunch, I called Waste Management to see if they had missed the pickup. I was told to put out twice as much next week that they would," which implied that they were not going to take, they were not going to try and come back to this area. Yet today, here came their truck. I went outside, I went out and talked to the driver. He is only picking up recycle. Now, which is more important, trash or recycle? And had to be for another week if this person had to wait. So I contacted our manager up there at IFGID, Mr. Pinkerton, and he gave me a number to contact this person and Waste Management. In fact, he spoke to the last IFGID meeting. So what I did was I sent him an email, and I'm still waiting to hear from that email, which I have sent to him, and nothing's been said at all. Because I just forwarded this email that this person sent to me. So I agree with what everybody said. Competition makes the world go round and makes things a lot better, and that's exactly what we need up here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Todoroff.
That's all the public comment.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, at this time, we'll bring it back to the board.
Mr. Schiller. I have a brief comment. It's been the objective of this commission for quite some time since I've become a Commissioner, to create safe and secure communities. And I think when we talk about safe and secure communities, we talk about healthy communities. I think currently, under the structure that we have proposed to our residents, we're forcing residents to go promote illegal dumping out into our areas. We're promoting them not to adhere to the rules and regulations that Waste Management and so forth has decided to set forth. I think the communication has been dramatically failed with this whole rollout. I think the ability for them to provide us with an on-budsman to deal with these issues has been missed dramatically. I think, and not to dismantle the intent of Sam and staff to be here to discuss, but they didn't even have the courtesy to bring forth decision-makers today to help rectify these solutions. So at this time, I am very dismayed with the current agreement we have, and I'd like the staff to bring us back some sort of a different agreement and some alternatives, because at this time, the way it is currently drafted, in my opinion, isn't acceptable for the entire county. So, are there any other comments on this issue at this time? Commissioner Herman?
I think I got it working. I think Mr. Edwards had a pretty good idea. Some folks that are, you know, from the private sector, and maybe they can come up with a little bit better agreement than we've got right now. There's some things that we could do. Even after we missed the deadline, we should still be able to opt out. So maybe they could provide a label that comes in the mail that you could stick on the recycle thing and stick it out there, and they'd take it. That would solve that problem. And then the other thing is, you know, if we're going to end up with such an unfair agreement to the people of these communities, I think that people should be given the opportunity to opt out of the total garbage package, if that's necessary, because maybe the private sector has some ideas that they could come up with, and maybe they could have an alternate, be able to choose an alternate, you know, if they don't want the mandatory thing. Because I don't think it's fair to give lousy service and lousy communication and have to pay for it and not have an opportunity to do something that would be of much more benefit. So, it's just a freedom issue with me. Thank you.
Mr. Hartong.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Schiller, there was a comment that was made with respect to the landfill that sadly resides in Story County and a franchise fee, and so I know we're not going to be able to deal with that, because that's not even in Washoe County, and, you know, the fact that they take waste from a neighboring state. So I don't think there's anything that we can do about that. But I guess the question would really come back to, in terms of, and I know Waste Management's not going to be happy about this potential, but how do we structure competition because they do own the landfill? Does it mean that Washoe County would have to establish a site somewhere and create a landfill? So these are just some questions that we would potentially need to answer if we decide to broach that subject and go down that road. I don't know what else to say, other than I feel and get the frustration. I understand it completely. And so there's got to be, there's got to be a better way to do business. Competition is absolutely healthy. You've seen Daktari. That's the nature of the world, as it were. So I don't know how we circumvent the problems without bringing in someone else who can potentially render service when service is poor. And it's just that simple. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartong. Any other Commissioners at this time? I think, Staff, I think you've got ample direction. One thing I forgot to add to really quickly is that there's just no repercussions, as was stated earlier, for Waste Management. If, you know, there's repercussions for the citizens, but nothing for us. I mean, nothing for Waste Management. And that's a problem, so I'd like to look at that. And then possibly opening it up to open market. So you've got direction. I think enough has been said. Mr. Schiller, is that enough for you today?
Yes, it is. What I will do is take the many comments and information that I receive for direction. Likely will agendize a future agenda item tied to this, but in the meantime, may also engage, per some of the public comment, will engage some of those participants in that process also. The question of the legality in terms of creating competition, we'll also research. I will tell you, given this may take a little time, I'm also going to be working on the customer service component, even prior to anything coming back before you. And we will continue to move forward with that and provide updates.
Great. Commissioner Herman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Schiller, there was an assertion that there's a completely different company that deals with Clark County and the city of Las Vegas, Republic, as I recall. And so, can we, and I don't know how tough it is to figure out what their agreements look like and how they have it structured, and I know that county versus city is a very different structure there because of gaming and the way that their tax revenues and their franchise fees would potentially work. So that may be part of the reason why there's a higher level of service. I'm not sure, but it would be interesting to at least look at that model. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartong. All right. Thank you very much. At this time, we're going to take a short break and then come back for agenda, our next items. So at this time, we are in recess. So at this time, we are in recess. Madam Clerk, are you ready?
We are ready.
Good afternoon. We are back in session as the Board of County Commissioners. And so, at this time, we have decided to push Agenda Item 9 to the end of the, the meeting. So that takes us to Agenda Item 12. So I will open the public hearing. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chair, Item 12 is Master Plan Amendment Case Number MPA 16-001 and Regulatory Zone Amendment Case Number RZA 16-002, USA Parkway Industrial. Public hearing, discussion and possible action to affirm the findings of the Planning Commission, and, one, to adopt an amendment to the Washoe County Master Plan, Truckee Canyon Area Plan, to change the master plan category on, one, plus or minus 60.22 acre parcel from rural to a mix of industrial and open space. Two, subject to final approval of the associated master plan change, to adopt an amendment to the Truckee Canyon Area Plan Regulatory Zone Map, changing the regulatory zone from general rural, maximum density, one dwelling unit per 40 acres to a mix of industrial, no allowable residential density, and open space, no allowable residential density. And if approved, three, to authorize the Chair to sign the two resolutions to adopt amendments to the Truckee Canyon Master Plan and Regulatory Zone Map after a determination of conformance with the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan by the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Do we need a presentation at this time?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Krishna Hartung.
This is in District 4. I just have a couple of questions. I've asked Mr. Whitney about this, but I just, it'll only take a second, and, and then I think we can proceed fairly quickly.
Mr. Whitney.
Mr. Whitney, thank you. Just a, just a fast question. While I recognize this is not in the TMSA, my concern is still that it will potentially trigger Policy 133 in the regional plan. And what I want to make sure of is that if it does indeed seem to, to trigger that assessment, that we can possibly, didn't we, didn't we make a request to change 120 acres in, in that last request? Wasn't it 120, and then Hock only used 80 of that 120?
No. Pushed something?
There you go.
Okay. All right. We were just having this conversation upstairs.
Ah, now it's loud. Yes, we went through that long process in regional planning to get some additional industrial land use out in the Spanish Springs area. And it hasn't all been used yet, if that's correct.
But I, but I thought it wasn't just in, in Spanish Springs, because I know that there was an, an additional, or there was maybe 400 acres, and a portion of it was going to apply to some stuff in, in Lemon Valley as well. So, I, I'm drawing a blank sadly.
Well, Commissioner Hartung, the, there, there are a few other places in the unincorporated county where additional industrial meets the criteria of Policy 133. And during that process, I was showing those few other places. This particular location doesn't meet that criteria.
Okay.
But the key here, as you just said earlier, this isn't in, within the TMSA. So it doesn't follow policy, or doesn't come under Policy 1, 1.1.3.
1.3.3.
Yes, that one.
Yeah, yes. Okay. Okay, that's, that's my only question. And if, if it does seem to circle back around, do we, do we have enough leftover acreage in, in the last request to accommodate this? Because I know it's not the full parcel that they're asking to be industrial.
That is correct. It's not the full parcel, and I believe we do have enough acreage if it did circle around.
Okay, good. Mr. Chairman, if no one else has any questions, I'd be happy to make a motion.
Yes, please make a motion.
Okay. I move to affirm the findings of the Planning Commission for MPA 16-001 and RZA 16-002, and adopt and amend the Washoe County Master Plan and the Truckee Canyon Area Plan to change the master plan category on, one, 60.22 acre parcel from rural to a, a mix of industrial and open space, and, open space. And, two, subject to final approval of the associated master plan change, to adopt and amend the Truckee Ari, the Truckee Canyon Area Plan Regulatory Zone Map, changing the regulatory zone from general rural to a mix of industrial and open space.
Second?
I have a motion from Hartung, a second from Commissioner Herman. Public comment, please. Oh, I'm sorry.
While you're calling that, Mr. Chairman, the, the approval also include the adoption of the two resolutions that are in the statute.
I was going to further move to authorize the Chair to sign the two resolutions to adopt the amendments of the Truckee Canyon Master Plan Map and Regulatory Zone Map after a determination of conformance with the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan by the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Commission.
Does the secondor agree? Do you have, we have confirmation? Public comment, please.
Mr. Chair, I have Lucas Ingolstadt signed in, but I don't believe he's, oh, here he is.
Good afternoon, Mr. Ingolstadt.
Good afternoon, and thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, for the record, my name is Lucas Ingolstadt. I'm Director of Public Affairs for Crowley and Ferrato. We represent EP Minerals, which is a Reno-based company with several mines throughout the state. One of EP's primary manufacturing plants is located on the southeast corner of USA Parkway in I-80, and has been located there since 1940. We are very pleased to see economic development along I-8, along the I-80 corridor, but are highly concerned about traffic and encourage you to ensure infrastructure is improved to accommodate existing and future growth. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, I have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chair, next item is Item 13, which is an appeal hearing and possible action to affirm, modify, or reverse the Board of Adjustments denial of administrative permit Case Number AP 16-008. An application by the Sun Valley General Improvement District for an administrative permit for an electronic message display sign. The overall height of the proposed sign is six feet. The overall width of the proposed sign is eight feet. The electronic message display area was, is approximately seven and a half feet in width and two feet in height, which is 15 square feet. Property is located at 115 West 6th Avenue at Sun Valley Regional Park. And I know we have Roger Pelham here, as well as the applicant represented by Darren Price.
Commissioner Jung, this is in your district. What would be your?
To defer to me, Mr. Chairman. So, um...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Item, Item 13 is a, is a hearing, an appeal hearing. And so, in, in these matters, we need to proceed in, in the proper order. You can, you can ask for a brief staff report, but then, the person filing the appeal needs to be able to have an opportunity to make their case to the board, then questions, then the back and forth, as you see fit. But they, they have the burden of persuasion here, so they need to have their opportunity to make a presentation.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. Do we have the appellant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the commission, Darren Price, General Manager for the Sun Valley GID. Could I have their presentation up, please? Okay. What I'd like to do is show you a few pictures that kind of tell the story. First of all, I, I want to thank Commissioner Herman and Commissioner Jung as well. We're partners on this, believe it or not. The county, through Commissioner Herman, was able to acquire the funds to replace the existing antiquated message board that we have at our largest park, the 26-acre park that's located by our neighborhood center. And we thought, great, the county's even paying for this sign. We were excited about it and good to go. Found out we had to do a special use permit, so we applied for it, and subsequently were denied. So, again, I'd like to show some of these pictures. And here we go. So, this is the existing sign. It was installed in 1994, or 96, as you can see. Very antiquated. You have to go out there and slide letters in and out to do your messages. Now, the county has several services still located at the neighborhood center. Those include the senior services, the Sheriff's Department is there, CSA is there, and we have several other programs as well. Zumba, karate, the Boy Scouts are in there. We recently got CSA up there to restart the kindergarten program, the preschool program, which was great. And that's up at the teen center, actually. But we needed a way to convey those messages, other than the media outlets that we use, the same as the county. Facebook, you know, our website, et cetera. And I don't know if I'm pointing the wrong way, or, there it goes. Whoop, that went too far. Sorry. I may need some technical assistance over there. I'm, there it goes. So, the existing sign lights up. This is it, lit up at night. This, as you can see, there's approximately four lines of text that we can put up there to display our messages. So, and this is the sign we wanted to replace it with. It is shorter than the existing sign. It is a little bit wider, of course, but it would allow us to convey those messages about all of those programs. What I want to stress as well, is that this will allow us for emergency notifications within our community as well. Amber alerts, weather alerts. God forbid, because I'm a water guy, boil water issues, if that ever came up, or anything of that nature. What happened was, via the sign code that was passed several months ago, you can see where the existing marquee site is. It's right next to the swimming pool in this aerial. In order to meet code, it was going to have to be moved north, approximately a quarter of a mile, to the other site that you see, which is basically in the detention basin, which happens to be full of water right now and frozen, approximately 10 to 12 foot deep, which is unfortunate, because it's covering up that beautiful skate park, that inline hockey rink, and a BMX track. But that's what it was built for, so it performed its duty. So in order to meet the code, in that spot that I just pointed out, this is the easement area. So it couldn't go here. Sun Valley Boulevard is a state highway. So this is an end dot right of way. So, it can't go here, which is right behind that area you just looked at. This is the sidewalk that goes all the way around the park. So the only place it could go is on the slope side, on the opposite side of the trees, the sidewalk, and the fence. And this is just a picture showing that area. I had my public works director stand there when we were investigating the site. By the way, he's almost six foot tall. So, really, the site, that site just doesn't work at all. It just doesn't work at all. If we put it behind the fence in that area, you wouldn't be able to see it because of the trees, you wouldn't be able to see it because of the fence, and it would barely show in the designated area. And this is just another shot showing how it slopes off all the way down into the detention basin. We met, and Roger can testify to this, we met everything associated with the code except for one thing. And that was, we were within 200 feet of residences for an electronic message display. Now, what I also wanted to point out, and I brought some today, and there was a gentleman here earlier, I don't know if he's still here, to testify, Trustee Elliott, who sits on our, our board, he went out and he was able to get three signatures, and these will be part of the public record as well, from the folks that live in this area. So, in the bottom left-hand corner, where you see it says NC, non-commercial, those are three vacant residential lots. Across the street, where it says GC, general commercial, that is a residential lot, and people do live there. And then you see, it hits on a couple of others. So, in essence, besides those three unoccupied, we're really disturbing, potentially, about four or five residences in that area, right there. This is what the residences deal with already. There is a large pedestrian crosswalk going north, south, east, and west, that has flashing lights that flash 24/7 anytime somebody pushes the button. In a medium to low-income community, those folks that work a lot of the casino jobs or 24-hour jobs, they hit the button all the time. There also happens to be a couple of bus stops right in that area, too. So it wouldn't be nothing new. And this is just another shot showing that portion of that area up in there. Now, before I leave, what I did want to say also was that I will have to, I too, like your manager, am but a humble servant to an elected board, so anything decided here today, I will have to go back before my board and see if it's amenable to them to continue with the project, with this partnership, in fact. And what I mean by that is, we started investigating, what can we do to mitigate some of these things that may be in violation of the code? Well, we can change dwell times. We can change transition times. I've already heard a couple of comments from my trustees that they didn't really want to restrict the time, but there's a potential there, maybe it gets turned off at midnight, I don't know, and turned back on at 6:00 in the morning. What we loved about the EMD that was proposed was, we can program it and transition between all these different messages, and show graphics, and do all kinds of cool things, from our office. I don't have to send one of our workers down there and swap out letters every time we want to convey a message, and one message, by the way, because it's too crowded on the sign. We are a medium to low-income community. The chance to improve our community and the quality of life out there for our residents is paramount to us. When we have these opportunities come up, they're usually few and far between. Now, God bless you, the county, for the improvements you do in the valley, all right? But, I mean, we just don't have a lot of money out there. So when these opportunities come out, we don't want them to pass by. We just don't want them to pass by. I really would appreciate you reconsidering the Board of Adjustments' decision and letting us install this sign, so that we can communicate better with our community. And with that said, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Jung? Okay, public comment?
Yes, we have Garth Elliott and then Vicki Maltzman.
Yes, we have Garth Elliott and then Vicki Maltman.
Commissioners, once again, Garth Elliott, for the record, this is clearly a case of community development gone awry. And unfortunately, it's turning these all upside down. We went to the B of A, and they said, the reason why they denied us is, you don't belong here. You belong first in front of the county commission. So, let's get that straight right away. So, this is our first appeal with you. Several years ago, they considered, Community Development, considered a new sign code. And in particular, they chose to attack electronic message boards. Twenty-five thousand people in the Sun Valley and at not one time were we asked to be involved. Community, one of the biggest community, if not the biggest community in Washoe County, we were not ever asked to be part of the program. Why not? You know, I'm always there to speak my mind. They know that. Darren's always there, but we were never asked to be part of the program. So, we ended up with a sign code that does not meet our needs. Totally inefficient, as far as the electronics code. Coincidentally, I've been working on that for about three years to get that sign put in, and we, obviously, we were stopped cold with the new sign code. The bad thing about the new code, there's no way out. There's not, well, if you're a community and you need a sign to broadcast emergency issues, you could just appeal and we'll let you do it. No, there's no language like that. We've got to come in front of you, which is not a bad thing. I do it quite often. But it shouldn't, should be unnecessary. During the B of A adventure, we learned that if we could say that this sign could be used to notice emergency road conditions, it was perfectly acceptable. But we weren't able to say for a fact, yes. But it is, that's one of the purposes. So, basically, even by the law that they put in, it's perfectly acceptable, as long as we broadcast emergency road conditions, which we definitely plan on doing because of location. Twenty-five thousand people, and we're silenced on this matter. But we want to be able to let the community know of the emergency situations and everything else on former county property and paid for by county funds. And we're shut down, again, by the county. This is ludicrous. So, please fix it. We want to do the right thing for our community, and we've so far been denied. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott.
Vicki Maltman.
Good afternoon again, commissioners. Vicki Maltman, for the record, Sun Valley resident and CAB member. This sign would mean so much to our community. We have been the stepchild of the county for so long that, you know, we've been called Scum Valley, Sin Valley, everything else. And while it's true that we can tweet, we can Facebook, we can Instagram, we can do all of these wonderful things with technology, please keep in mind that the majority of the old Sun Valley residents do not know how to use a computer, can't afford a computer, and if they have a computer, they don't have access to the internet. It is one of the most difficult places I have ever lived in my lifetime, almost sixty-six years, to get messaging out to the community. If it goes out through the Sun Valley GID note, we miss half the residents because they're not GID customers. I wish this sign were going further down toward El Rancho, but this is the best thing that could happen in our community. Please, again, don't put politics before people. You have regulation, it's not a law. You're not going to go to jail if you let us have a sign. Please, let us get the information out to the seniors that go to scolaries and utilize that they can see that we have lunches for the senior lunch nutrition program. That if we have to boil water or if we have a missing child, which has happened in Sun Valley, that we can post that information. The residents are in favor. They don't care if the sign is there. So, please don't let some little thing stop what could be such an asset for many. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Maltman.
That's all the public comment.
Thank you very much. All right. Commissioner Herman?
I'm not very...
You had it there. Nope, one more time.
Now it is.
There you go.
By magic, I didn't do it. Okay, the first thing I want to mention is, because it kind of fits in with the public comment, is Susan Severt had sent me an email this morning. And so, I promised I would have them passed around and to all the members of this board, and it's regarding the sign. I... We were lucky enough to get funding, a grant, to get this sign. And the seniors people helped us do that. And we've been trying for a long time to get this sign up, but it's been kind of tough. And it's gone through all the different committees and meetings and Board of Adjustment. And, you know, the Board of Adjustment is limited in their authority, but we're not. And we can make this sign thing work. It's a public service sign, is what it amounts to. And if, well, I don't know. It just seems like there has to be a way to do this. So, thank you.
Commissioner Herman, would you like to make the motion?
I would certainly like to make a motion. If you're all ready.
Hold on one second. Mr. Liparelli?
Mr. Chair, judging by, you know, judging by some of the comments and questions, I wanted to offer a quick explanation of the legal standard that you have to use to make this decision. The new sign code requires an administrative permit for electronic message display signs. That's what this is. It meets the definition of electronic message display. And as such, the code as written restricts the location of these items to not within the two-hundred-foot distance limitation to residential zoning. So, the sign code as written does not permit this sign, and the sign code does not contain any variance provisions. Unless, the only variance provision in the sign code is if the issuance of the permit is required by state or federal mandate. So, it's difficult to navigate a way through this legally without violating your own sign code. Now, folks may say, well, that's a violation you can look past because this is a fellow governmental entity, and this isn't a precedent-setting approval. But when you're called upon later to enforce a restriction of an electronic message sign, that applicant will surely know that you use this opportunity to do a solid for a fellow government entity. So, the opportunities are overturn the Board of Adjustment decision, but knowing that you're essentially creating an exception to the sign code that the code itself doesn't contemplate. The other avenue is to amend the sign code, to make an exception for signs, change the standard from two-hundred to some smaller threshold, or create an exception for signs that are electronic message signs that are owned and operated by other government entities. But as you can recall, the sign code revision was a long process involving a lot of stakeholders. There were a lot of compromises made to get that sign code approved. And there will be people who observe what happens with this issue, and it could cause legal ripples down the road. So, as difficult as it is, because the folks who've made the presentation have told you all the good things this sign will do, and that certainly could be true, but unfortunately, that's not the criteria. It's not how much good the sign will do or how much of an improvement it'll be over the existing deal, or how much more efficiency it will create, is, the question is, are you following the sign code? And so, that's my best try at trying to advise you what the standards are.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Liparelli, I appreciate that. Commissioner Jung?
So, Mr. Liparelli, the way that this agenda item is written, can, am I able to say from here on out, we will exempt other governmental entities that demonstrate the public good and safety that they are addressing? Can I do that now, or does this have to be re... Because what it sounds like you're saying right now is that there's really no place to go unless I'm allowed to exempt that today. Or would I have to exempt it today and then ask to bring back an amendment to our sign code? And this is just the first volley of the exemptions? And, you know, we do exemptions all the time. I mean, especially with new codes. So, I would propose, if it's within legal bounds, that I can make the findings, that they meet the findings, the four different areas, vis-à-vis, if we consider that this is another governmental entity that is doing a public service, and really doing a county service as well, not just a GID service. And then, if I can get a second on that, I would also direct staff to come back with new language for governmental entity exemptions.
So, the decision is with the board? I'm just an advisor.
Would that be acceptable as a...
If the board overturns the Board of Adjustment decision and directs the issuance of the permit, it would be my advice that you, as soon as possible, come back with an amendment to the sign code that articulates the basis for the exception so that the next person who meets those criteria will have an exemption available to them.
Okay, well, that's my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Jung, second from Commissioner Herman. Further discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I completely agree with Commissioner Jung. I think that this is a unique circumstance and a unique community. I think that this sign could also be used to blast out messages in Espanol. And many of those people may not be connected to the internet or have access quickly to news and to agencies. And I think that this really provides a very unique opportunity to do something for that community that speaks to everyone there fairly easily. So, I mean, I'm in complete agreement with Commissioner Jung, where we need to have a way to look at these things on an individual basis. And this is not on a mast that's two-hundred feet tall. It's, you know, it's not advertising some business. I think it's perfectly appropriate, and so, I'm fully in support.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second on the floor. Mr. Liparelli?
Just want to clarify what the motion is. I think Commissioner Jung said she had some ways to make findings, and then I jumped in and started, you know, derailing her thought process. So, maybe if she could get back to that.
How would we do this? How would we have her redo her motion? And then, we can move to the second one as well in regards to the amendment, if you want to do that.
Do you want me to pull my motion, Mr. Liparelli, and start over? Okay. So, I move that the Board of County Commissioners reverse the decision of the Board of Adjustment and approve administrative permit case number AP one-six dash zero-zero-eight for the Sun Valley General Improvement District, having made all five findings in accordance with Washoe County Development Code, section one-ten dot eight-oh-eight dot two-five-one consistency. It is, the use is consistent with the Action Programs, Policy Standards, and Maps of the Master Plan, because it's only replacing a sign that is already illuminated in there. Number two, there is no need for utilities, roadway improvements, sanitation, water. As I stated, the sign is already there. Number three, I believe it is physically suitable for the type of development and the intensity of such a development. May I say again, there is already illuminated sign there. And then, number four, this will not significantly be detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare, injurious to the property. That's actually Sun Valley's general improvements property, or detrimental to the character of the surrounding area. I would argue that this is an improvement to the surrounding area. And number five is, doesn't apply. There's no military installation involved.
All right, I have a motion. Second or agrees? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
So... Commissioner, hold on one second, really quick. Commissioner Jung, would you like to also put on the record in regards to...
ASAP, could the staff come to our next meeting, preferably with language that is going to exempt other governmental agencies that meet these conditioning requirements?
Thank you, Commissioner Jung.
So, you briefly opened up item eighteen.
Yeah, we briefly did open up item eighteen to have that discussion.
Thank you.
All right. With all that being said, Mr. Manager?
Mr. Chairman, next item is item fourteen. This is an appeal hearing and possible action to affirm, modify, or reverse the Board of Adjustments denial of a special use permit case number SB sixteen dash zero-one-zero, Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District, Station fourteen, which requested approval of a special use permit for the construction and operation of a new fire station. The property is located at the southeast corner of Foothill Road and Broken Hill Road.
All right. All right, at this time, would the appellant like to state the case?
One moment, while we get the presentation ready.
Good afternoon, Ms. Russ.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman Lucy and members of the commission. For the record, Angela Fuess with CFA, representing Truckee Meadows Fire. Chief Moore and I will be jointly presenting as the applicant, and I will be going first. In one moment. Thank you.
Here you go.
And, perfect. So, it was about two years ago when Truckee Meadows Fire began the process to look for a relocation for Station fourteen. The existing Station fourteen has been at this location off of Demani, near the Walmart Shopping Center, for about thirty years. Initially, this was a volunteer fire station, so it was built with just an apparatus bay. And then, over the years, it became a City of Reno fire station, and then subsequently, more recently, the Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District Station. This station has a lot of building issues, location issues, and response time issues. So, for two years now, the chief has been looking for and working towards a new location. This map gives you an illustration of the service area. And we just wanted to highlight, everything in the dark brown or tan is the service area. So, this is a very large geographic area that this station has to meet eight-minute response times towards. So, towards the north, we have South McCarran, as is kind of the northern boundary. And towards the south, we have Steamboat. All the way to the east is Story County, and all the way to the west is more of the Collin Ranch area. So, this is a very large area. And looking for a new location, then, we were looking for a site that was centrally located, that we could easily access either three-ninety-five located, that we could easily access either 395 or Virginia Street to be able to get to this wide area. So the location that has been sought is off of Foothill and Broken Hill Road. This is about 1,400 feet from Virginia. One of the reasons that this was really an ideal location was because of its central location, again, within that broader service area. Another key element of the station is being able to provide backup to the Hidden Valley area. So this is an easy access to get to the Hidden Valley area. Another good point that we wanted to bring up was the location to two schools. And one school in particular is the Marvin Pacolo School. That is a school that serves special needs. It's a school for everywhere from, you know, pre-kindergarten all the way to 12th graders. So they have a much higher need in terms of their emergency calls. And this location is now about 30 seconds away from that school, before they were about four and a half minutes away from that school. So that's a significant increase in response time. In terms of size, we were looking for a parcel that was about three acres. We actually were able to find a parcel that was five acres, and we're using about three acres for the fire station. Another key element was the fact that we can access the station from two different roads. The existing site only has access from one road. So when you come in, you have to back into the apparatus bay. This gives them the flexibility to pull in and go straight forward. So that saves a lot of time, especially if they have a high need to be able to get in and out quickly. And then also, in terms of, again, the central location, we want to be able to get to some of these main corridors, like Virginia Street and I-580, quickly. So this is an ideal location for those needs. Here's a rendering of the proposed station, similar to every other fire station that the Truckee Meadows operates. This will be a 48-hour type of crew, so they'll come on once every 48 hours, a four-man crew. And in terms of how this fits in with other fire stations in the area, I just wanted to give you an example of where other fire stations are located in terms of residence and other types of buildings. Whoops, excuse me. If we look back at the Hidden Valley Fire Station, and that was one that was, again, a temporary fire station with the deconsolidation or separation between Reno and Truckee Meadows, that is now a permanent fire station. That is surrounded by single-family homes. The Arrow Creek Station, right off of Arrow Creek Parkway, again, it's right next to residential homes. Joy Lake, up off of Joy Lake Road, there's a fire station up there, again, surrounded by residential development. Sun Valley Fire Station, surrounded by residential development with access onto Sun Valley Boulevard. And this portion of Sun Valley actually is just a two-lane road with drainage ditches on either side. So it's very similar in nature to the project that we're proposing today. There we go, whoops. Some of the challenges we've had with this site, we wanted to just highlight and let you know what we've done to try and fix some of these questions that we've heard from the public. We did go to a cab, presented this project, and we had a couple of questions, not a lot of concerns. We then held our own neighborhood meeting, where we invited the neighbors to come out and learn about the project. And these are some of the big points that they brought up, and here's what we've done to try and amend our site. So again, we talked about the fire truck access. This allows us, you can see by the yellow arrows, this allows us to come in off of Broken Hill Drive and then exit off of Foothill. So we don't have to worry about fire trucks backing up or having to get an access off of Broken Hill. They're able to, again, it's a straight-in, straight-out kind of a design. We are looking at future expansion of this site. Knowing that the unincorporated Washoe County is going to be expanding over the next 10 to 20 years, there's going to be a future need for fire service. So if we wanted to be able to expand this location and add a second crew, we put that into the design, so that, let's say, five, 10 years from now, you don't have to build a brand-new fire station, you can expand this fire station. One of the other comments was public parking. Where are people going to park so that they're not parking on these residential streets? Per the code, we have to have five parking stalls. We have 15 parking stalls. So that is three times the number of parking that's required per code. And that is with public parking accessed off of Foothill, and then the employee parking accessed off of Broken Hill. Right now, there are no sidewalks on either Foothill or Broken Hill. This project will bring sidewalks to both Broken Hill and Foothill. So that's an improvement overall to the neighborhood. Site lighting. Initially, we had a lighting plan that we proposed with a special use permit. In working with staff, we've amended that lighting plan, so that we don't have what we call the spillover or lighting pollution, so that the neighbors aren't negatively impacted by any light coming off the site. Another big question was the generator. As you can see, on the east side, we have a proposed generator. That is a backup system, so that if the power ever goes out, we still have the ability to have power. The concern was the noise. And so we've gone back and we've modified the site, so we now have an enclosure, an eight-foot-tall block wall around that generator, and it's focused the opposite direction, so headed west. So all the noise will then be going west. We've also modified what that generator is, so you can spec different types of generators. We now have a generator in place that has a very light sound attenuation, so the noise level will be minimal. And in terms of, you know, what is an acceptable level of noise from a generator? This generator by itself is about 70 decibels. And just as a comparison, a lawnmower is about 90 decibels. Once you add that eight-foot-tall wall, the decibel reading will go down to more like 50 decibels. So that is me having a conversation with you in a restaurant is actually more than 50 decibels. So the noise has been greatly reduced. And then finally, we've added a school bus pad. There is a school bus drop-off and pickup here on this corner off of Broken Hill. So we've been working with the school district to come up with an appropriate bus pad location. The fact that we've added sidewalks makes it much safer for students, and that we have lighting on that corner also makes it much safer for the students. We are in agreement with the amended conditions of approval proposed by staff. That includes widening of Foothill Road within our parcel limits. We have, again, added sidewalks to both Foothill and Broken Hill. We have amended our site lighting. And then we also have the removal of the training tower. And I didn't touch on this much, but it came up quite a bit during the Board of Adjustments hearing. There is a proposed training tower, which will be happening in future phases. We have agreed to withdraw the training tower from the site plan. It is needed, and so we'll just have to find a different location. But again, given the neighborhood concerns, we have agreed to remove the training tower from the site plan. Foothill Road, this was probably one of the biggest concerns and comments we heard from the neighbors, is what's going to happen on Foothill Road. So we just wanted to kind of bring you up to date on some of the concerns and how we've addressed those. One of the concerns is there are two schools up the street, again, Marvin Pacolo and Lenz Elementary. And so there was concern that there's backup, where this fire truck will be pulling out during school drop-off and pickup. Over the last two months, we've gone out there, probably on a dozen different locations or different times, both in the morning for drop-off and in the afternoon for pickup. And we've taken photos. And not once have we seen any backup where this fire station is located, where trucks will pull out. So we feel pretty confident that that's not going to be an issue. In terms of Foothill Road, it's a two-lane road with drainage ditches on the side. We had a traffic engineer go out and do counts to figure out how much traffic is actually on this road and where it's at in terms of a level of service. It's currently at a level of service C. And as you know, A is optimal, there's no traffic, F is failing, you need to do something. So level of service C is still definitely acceptable, and at this point, there is no requirements or reason to widen Foothill Road. However, per the engineer, the county engineers' request, they would like us to widen Foothill Road within the limits of our parcel. So we have agreed to do that. Another concern we heard was at the corner of Foothill and South Meadows in Virginia, pretty much where that intersection is, there's backup. And so there's concerns that fire trucks are going to come pulling out to service a call, and they're going to get stuck in traffic. So we've agreed to put in what we call this Traffic Signal Preemption System. And it allows the fire department to basically push a button, and it speeds up the light so that they can get through if they need to. They have this already in operation out in Sun Valley, so they're used to it. It's not something you use at every intersection, or every fire station uses it, but in this location, again, considering the neighbors' concerns, we've agreed to put that in. We also have emergency vehicle crossing signage and striping within the driveway limits. So when cars or when the fire trucks pull out, it's about a 60-foot-wide driveway, they will be able to have the lights going so that people know there's a fire truck coming out. And then, again, the big one, the Foothill widening. So while we can't widen the entire length of Foothill Road, what we can do is widen the limits within our parcel. And so that's what we're proposing to do. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to the chief for his final comments.
Good afternoon, Chief. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Charlie Moore, Fire Chief, Truckee Meadows Fire District. According to the National Fire Protection Association, 96% of fire deaths occur in the home. They don't occur where we work or where we worship. They happen where we sleep. So the question came up is why wouldn't you just rebuild this fire station in the location that you're at in a commercial core? Well, that's the most important reason, is that all of our stations, except for this one really, are in residential neighborhoods. That's where we're needed most. And it's not just about fire, of course, it's about advanced life support. We are going to be very, very close to Marvin Pacolo School, which, of course, is a school for disabled children. Some of them have medical needs, and on average, we respond about nine times a year to Marvin Pacolo School for very serious EMS calls. But let me talk a little bit about the call load coming from this station. As we've measured it over a year, on average, we respond and come out of that station on a call three times per day. One of those three calls is usually to support a call going up north, as the north districts can be busy with fires, and all of our stations converge on a particular call there. Station 14 often goes up into the north to cover that service area until the incident is stabilized. It's very likely that we're going to add another engine in the next budget cycle, so that's going to remove, very likely going to remove, one call out of the three going forward. So we're really looking at two calls per day over the course of a year. We've also measured where those calls are in a heat map. And if you look at the map, coming out of the fire station, 94% of the calls in 2016 were making a right-turn motion out of the fire station. So we're really not going into the neighborhoods very, very often. But of course, when we do, there's a need. There's an emergency need. Someone's house is on fire, somebody's having an emergency medical condition, and so whether or not we're going into the neighborhoods, lights and siren, we're going to be going into the neighborhoods, lights and siren, from wherever we're responding from. So in this particular case, we're a lot closer to a lot of our citizens. You know that the existing fire station right now is surrounded by City of Reno jurisdiction. So this station puts it in the county and puts it closer to a lot of the calls that we're servicing within that district. So let me just say that, you know, we have studied this to a significant degree. This went to the cab on three different occasions. And it's certainly been before the Board of Fire Commissioners, at least in my research, about 12 different times. So until we had the community meeting, we did not hear any pushback from people attending the cab, nor did we hear it from public comment in any of the Board of Fire Commissioner meetings. So it is my professional judgment that this station needs to occur in this location. It will enhance our service for the future. And we would ask that the Board of County Commissioners reverse the finding of the Board of Adjustment. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Moore. At this time, I'm going to open public comment. Take the public comment first.
We have several people to speak, so if you would queue up when I call your name, it'll go faster. First up, we have Ken McBride, and then Angela Fuss, and Chris Russ.
Good afternoon.
My name's Ken McBride. I'm here to appeal to you, all your members, to affirm the denial of the special permit. I am retired, and I'll admit that I'm unfamiliar with the process. So I may be, well, keep in mind what I'm about to say, maybe in error. But let me start off that I moved in this community five years ago. I love Reno. I love the Four Seasons, and as you can tell from my voice, I'm from the south. In fact, I moved here from Florida. Some people ask me I'm crazy. Anyway, I've looked, ever since I've been here for five years, my taxes have increased. And guess what? These same, it's ironic, these same dollars are going to the fire department, who is basically, I feel like, is a schoolyard bully. They have, and I don't understand, I do not understand why this happened or how it happened, but they have bought the property prior to getting approval. This seems suspicious to me. I'm not going to stand here and repeat all the other concerns, because they're all valid, but you've already heard them and read them and seen them in the minutes of the other boards, previous boards. And I do believe that when the statement was made that there's no backup of traffic, I live within 700 feet of the corner, and I live within 700 feet of this site. I can see the site from my back door. My property fronts Foothill, so I see the traffic every day when it backs up. And it does back up. There is no, the shoulders of Foothill is very narrow. It's a public safety hazard just to walk down the side of the road with or without this construction. So I feel like it's a misappropriation of my tax dollars when they bought this property, and when there's other property that could be bought and in a better position. I, for one, don't like a firehouse in my neighborhood. I'm just curious if, would you like to live next door to a fire station? They say all of them are. I'm curious about all these other people who live there, are they happy? And we're all supposed to be happy in the pursuit of happiness in our homes. But yet now, this bully has come along and says, "We're going to move in with a presumption that it's going to be approved, because we've already bought the property." And I've heard no one mention that. Now, it may be illegal, what they've done, but it sure seems to me that it's suspicious that they've gone ahead and spent, I've heard some figures, over 1.2 mil for this property, or maybe even more. I don't even know exactly how much it is. But they've already spent the money, and now they expect you guys to go along with them. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Assistant.
Chris Russ, followed by Kathy Russ, and then Ronald Lewis.
Chris Russ. I'm a resident on Broken Hill, directly across from the fire department that's going to be, or proposed to be built. At the November 16th community meeting, the developer and the chief admitted that a traffic study had not been conducted at that time. The study is vital and should be required. We asked if there were comparisons between current response times, projected response times for call service proposed for the location. We also asked if this was a site that was looked at in terms of the gap in service delivery for the fire department, and whether or not they considered future build-out for the county. And this map that they showed, they're saying it's centrally located, but you also see everything on the right-hand side of that map, where there's future development that's going on in that area, increasing the number of calls for service. So all we asked for was justification that this was, in fact, the proper location for the firehouse based on service delivery. If it is, that's great. But you heard someone else mention just now that that property was purchased two years ago, before any of this was even presented through the process. At the December 1st Board of Adjustments hearing, safety and quality of life were the two most pressing. We made suggestions to minimize ambient noise levels. We asked that Foothill Road be widened all the way to the intersection of South Virginia for safe passages of pedestrian cars and fire personnel. The board asked Chief Moore and the developer if they would be willing to postpone the permit request until February 17, 2017, to allow the fire department time to consider and mitigate the issues at hand. They refused. The board denied this special use permit. At the Board of Adjustments hearing, the developer said a traffic study was conducted. A C rating was given to the roadway and showed photographs of the area. The study misrepresented the traffic, present traffic conditions. Traffic strips were placed on Foothill Road four hours, a four-hour period on Wednesday, November 23rd, day before Thanksgiving, and schools were out during the time this traffic study was conducted. Photographs were also taken the same day over a 30-minute period. Mind you, there are no school buses and no traffic on that roadway. The schools were closed because this was a Wednesday before Thanksgiving. At the hearing, they proposed a plan to widen Foothill to accommodate the traffic. The problem is that they proposed widening Foothill 100 feet directly in front of the fire station. The single eastbound lane would widen to two lanes in front of the fire station for 100 feet, and then reduce back to one lane prior to the intersection. This would create hazardous conditions. The roadway will potentially prevent traffic, roadway will potentially prevent traffic trucks from moving down Foothill Road to respond to calls for service. That intersection is in the city of Reno, and so is about 700 feet of it going west of the intersection. And, let's see, running out of time here, so. One of the things that we'd like you to do is consider looking at the photos that were presented. We think that they've been disingenuous, not forthcoming, and not very honest in their presentation. Much of the information you're seeing today for the first time was not presented, and they were not even engaged in developing the roadways or opticon device until they had a community meeting with impacted residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Russ.
Kathy Russ, followed by Donald Lewis. Is Donald here? Donald's not here. Then Joe Thiemann.
Can you get the overhead for me real quick? For the record, each of you, I hope, got a handout with some photographs of the area that we're talking about.
I think she's distributing those now. A little further over to the left. There's a little circle on the desk. Yep, right there. There you go.
Oh, my time has already started. Sorry about that. Okay. My name is Kathy Russ. I live on Broken Hill. When we're talking about this intersection, we're talking about the street, the bigger picture is that the bottleneck that's going to occur is within the city of Reno. picture is that the bottleneck that's going to occur is within the city of Reno for the most part, not within Washoe County. The cement island that separates the westbound and the eastbound traffic here is within the city's jurisdiction, and so we're worried. We don't know that the street will be safe. It cannot be appropriately widened and upgraded to accommodate this project. The bottleneck created by this will increase the gridlock, and it'll be impassable for fire personnel. It's not suitable for an exit point for fire personnel. The developer, now it sounds like there's going to be a preemptive device considered, and we want to see if the county has the right to install that on a city intersection. The pictures that we provided to you are any weekday, in the morning, in the afternoon. The afternoon is the eastbound traffic, for the most part. At the Board of Adjustments meeting, when we stated the problems with the current traffic conditions, the possible pedestrian hazards, because at the end of this, where that bus is, is where the sidewalk is going to stop. Pedestrians will be dumped back into the dirt. There's not going to be a shoulder for anybody to yield to these fire trucks, which will be pulling out right where this laser sits. A member was familiar with it, and he confirmed what we were talking about. He knew it was a problem. He was familiar with the area. They've failed to prove that they've researched the proposed location, that it's suitable, and for equally as important that it's going to meet future demands. We want to know if research was done within national standards, which they have national standards set for fire, wherein you're choosing a fire station and where it's going to be proposed. There was a concern also about the increase in ambient noise level, the emergency generator on the west, on the side of the residences, the overhead PA's radio systems that'll emit from the truck bays, the twenty-four-seven use of emergency lights and sirens. I'm hearing that the thirty-five-foot tower is going to not be installed. We want it totally rejected and not to go into any of the phases because it doesn't fit the makeup of the community. The project does not meet the five findings that are required in accordance with Washoe County codes. I read a staff report dated December twenty-eighth from the senior planner, Roger Pelum, who also encouraged you guys to, to confirm the advisory board's decision to not allow it. But if you do, we would like you to consider a traffic study, an in-depth traffic study. The traffic study should be considered to determine whether or not preemptive devices...
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Russ.
Joe Theeman, followed by Kay Theeman, and then Janice Clark.
Good afternoon, Mr. Theeman.
This is where it goes?
Yep, right there.
Okay. There you go. Okay. My name is Joe Theeman, and I live at one zero zero five zero San Clemente Drive, which will be very close to the proposed fire station. And today, I represent not only myself and my family, but some other neighbors of mine that signed a petition. We are all very concerned with emergency vehicles needing to use residential streets in order to respond to the community's needs. Should the fire station be allowed to be built where it's being proposed? In my household alone, we have four drivers and two kids using these streets daily, and it's nonsense to say that a fire station, or even a new residence in the area, would not affect local traffic. Once the fire station is built on the corner of Foothill and Broken Hill Road, fire trucks and other emergency vehicles will need to travel through these residential streets, all posted twenty-five miles per hour, in order to reach South Virginia, South Truckee Meadows, and three ninety-five or five eighty. According to the fire chief, Moore here, emergency vehicles will always travel from Broken Hill towards Virginia ninety-five percent of the time. And for those of you that do not travel on Foothill Road and know what it's like there, between Broken Hill and South Virginia, it's, like they say, approximately a quarter mile of very narrow residential roads. They measure an average of twenty-three point seven feet across in multiple spots, and I've measured them. The street is completely without shoulders or provisions for bike and pedestrian traffics as it exists today. Because of the design issues, and you saw it, the picture, we also currently have a serious bottleneck at Virginia and Foothill when the school gets out every single day. And it will back up all the way to the schools, which is quite a bit further than where the fire station is, and it's hard to get out on Broken Hill sometimes. All the way along Foothill in either direction, there is absolutely no place to pull over if a fire truck is coming down the road at you. And what we're concerned with is, like myself, we tend to panic behind the wheel and look for a place to go, and in this case, we're literally going to have to outrun the fire trucks and get on off, out of their way. So that's kind of a strange scenario for us drivers. Without improvements...
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Kay Theeman, followed by Janice Clark, and then Gordon Gobel.
Hi, I'm Kay Theeman. I'm here to represent myself and my extended family, who live at one zero zero five zero San Clemente. I have four adult drivers in my home. One is an eighty-four-year-old. I have my daughter, thirty-eight, and my husband, who just spoke, and also my nine-year-old and fourteen-year-old granddaughters. Those granddaughters, not old enough to drive yet, but they sure are old enough to be pedestrians and old enough to walk down to the nearby stores, or, you know, run an errand or something like that. But with this increased traffic on the road, it's going to make it even more difficult to safely get down there. I mean, it's, it's an inadequate street as it is for the traffic that's on it. There's been an increased traffic just from people taking the back route over Lakeside to Thomas Creek to down Foothill. We have increased traffic from the schools, and it backs all the way up, and also to get to the RTC bus stop. If you're not a driver, you would have to walk down that road because it's over off of Virginia and Foothill or South Meadows is what it turns into. We've lived there for ten years, and in that, that time period, when we first moved there, I contacted the Washoe County streets and asked if that street would ever be widened or if any shoulders would be added, any sidewalks, and they said, no, there was no plans for that at this time. Still, I don't hear that there's any plans for that, other than what they're suggesting with a hundred-feet expansion in front of the station. Then it necks back down, then you still have that bottleneck. And the primary reason that I've heard from multiple people of why they're opposing it is this rural residential road that is inadequate for the larger vehicles. We have some construction traffic with tractor trailers on our streets now from people building homes on up Foothill at Thomas Creek, and if you're in a passenger truck, it's sketchy if you're going to even get back past that larger vehicle. And these fire engines are larger. The special use permit application says that the safety and welfare of the citizens won't be impacted, but I say that this project does just that. There's no shoulders, narrow road, and numerous roadside obstacles with power poles and other rocks and things along the road. And then you add in these large emergency vehicles with sirens and lights that are distressing, you know, people are taught to pull over as soon as they see that, and it equates to unsafe conditions that does affect safety and welfare of the immediate neighborhood and commuter traffic. And I ask that you uphold the decision of the Board of Adjustments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Janice Clark, followed by Jordan Gobel, and then Deborah Gobel. No, Janice Clark?
I think we have.
Okay. Jordan Gobel.
Good afternoon, Mr. Gobel.
Thank you, sir. Saying it so does not make it so. What you have heard from the fire district is, we want to put it there, and we've addressed the issues. That's not the case. These questions came up during the Board of Adjustment. When those issues were seriously considered, the special use permit was denied. This is not an all-or-nothing situation. You haven't heard anything that says this station must go there and nowhere else. Doesn't say that. The proposed site right now has no ability to fix the antiquated residential streets. There are multiple places along Virginia, right in the very same neighborhood, to meet the same concerns about serving the community, that would obviate all of the concerns about the streets and the school and the bus traffic. Because you cannot fix it right now, simply saying, "We want to put it there," is not a good enough reason for the board here to say, "Okay, you can do that." If they had the ability to fix the problems that have been identified, that would be different. When you saw the photographs that you've seen up here about the traffic that goes back past Foothill, you see the telephone poles on either side of the road. There's no ability to put sidewalks there. You can't widen the road because the telephone poles are there. There's private property on both sides. You can't relocate the telephone pole. So the question I would ask is, why? Why does it have to be here? You can put it in another place. Saying, "I choose to put it here," doesn't mean that it has to go there. The identified issues of safety and traffic have not been addressed. I'd urge the board to say no.
Thank you.
Deborah Gobel, and then Michael Imus.
Head west on East ninety-two toward Moore Avenue. I don't know how that...
Have it face towards you, ma'am.
Yeah.
Have it face towards you. Face it towards you. There you go.
Good morning, Deborah Gobel. I live in the, in the neighborhood, and I oppose the project because of the traffic issues. That's the biggest issue for us. If you can look at this, this is a view of, from Broken Hill towards Virginia. That is normal traffic. I was out there for four days, took pictures every single day between the time that school got out, between three and three fifteen, and that is what it looks like. Normally, it takes between three and five traffic cycles to get through that intersection. On this particular day, it took me four cycles. This is the first picture, and then getting on to, this is getting on to Foothill, heading towards Virginia. And this is another picture heading there. Now, the other traffic we have to contend with is coming out of the shopping center. We have to allow for all those cars that are backing up trying to get out of the shopping center onto Foothill because that's the only way they can get out. The, after I did that, I turned around and took a picture behind me to show that it's not just I'm the last one, I'm through the intersection, it's all done. This is all behind me after I'd already sat through five lights, uh, four lights to get through this intersection. So whatever they've been proposing, they need to do a traffic study because these pictures alone show you that they haven't done enough research. They haven't done enough to say that this is the best thing for this neighborhood. Right now, we've got nowhere to go. You can see, looking back, where would those cars go if a fire truck pulled out? They have nowhere to go. And if there's a pedestrian out there, good luck. I hope they can run fast because they're going to get run over. The other thing is, truck, the, the Board of Adjustment denied their petition because they looked at everything that was presented. Now, we, the community, was not notified until one of our neighbors found out about the court, the adjustment meeting, because we are outside that five-hundred-square-foot radius. And once we found out, now all of a sudden, we had to scramble to try and get things ready to make a presentation to you guys because we were not given enough time. So the police department and the contractor, whoever's building it, should have given, should have put a big sign up so that we were informed, but that's the only reason that they did not hear as much of a outcry as you're hearing right now. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Michael Imus, and I represent the Sierra Nevada Homeowner, or Sierra Manor Homeowners Association, which encompasses seventy-eight homes, and we're on the north side of Foothill. So approximately six of our homes are on the Foothill. Our biggest concern really is the traffic, and other homeowners here have addressed that. Plus, I'd like to point out that during the summer, a lot of the bike riders, it's a scenic route that they take to Thomas Creek, and then they go up through Lakeside. So there's a lot of traffic, a lot of foot traffic on a little rural road. To put a sidewalk around the Truckee Meadows Fire Protection where they're going to put the fire station is good, but then they would fall straight off into the ditch. The only way it could work is if they widen that whole road all the way down. Thank you.
Thank you.
That is all the public comment.
Thank you so much. Bring it back to the board at this time. At this time, I'm going to bring you back to further discussion amongst the board in regards to this issue. Does anybody have any concerns? I would make the motion. I, oh, oh. Am I getting pulled over?
Yeah, we have some, a little, a little discussion here, if I may.
Commissioner Harton.
And these are always difficult decisions to make. They're never easy. I heard about residents who've lived there for five and ten years, and I, I understand completely. Lived in my home for thirty years. I have a fire station in my neighborhood, nineteen eighty-eight. Blessedly, they put my house out because it was on fire. During the last walk season, I, during the campaign season, I walked the entire neighborhood and talked to people about all manner of things, and never once did a fire station come up about it bothering them in the neighborhood. And in fact, the gal who lives directly across the street from the fire station extolled their virtues because they would come over and shovel her walk and assist her when they, when they saw her outside, and, I mean, they were, they were great, great neighbors in the community. If we don't put fire stations in residential areas, where do we put them? Because they're there to serve you, and I can guarantee you, and you, and you, the, the traffic is certainly an issue. We had the same issue in Spanish Springs when it was, it's now La Posada, but it was Old Spanish Springs Road, and it was just a two-lane road. And there was always traffic there until they improved the intersection. And so there was also a need to improve the intersection because of the additional traffic and because, you know, we saw those kinds of, of issues with, with just clogging the intersection back a great distance. I can't articulate how many people have written me letters thanking us for firemen saving their lives. And that's the tough part. And I, and I see you shrugging this off, but if it has to happen in, in someplace, if we're going to put them someplace, I want them where they're going to do the best good. I have a, I have an elementary school from my right, I live on Sky Ranch. I have an elementary school, I can, I, just, almost. That's the nightmare. They're the nightmares. I can tell you, the, those parents are, they are, they are the worst. It's not, it's not the emergency vehicles. It's just not. And, and Station Seventeen, and I've done a number of ride-alongs with, with our fire crews, more than three-quarters of the time, when they went out of the station, no lights, no sirens. They were just, they were out on, pardon me, on a spicy pickle, on a, on a, call it a good-intent call. And, and it's not good intent, per se, the way that the chief describes them, but they were, they were out on a call that wasn't a priority-one call. Somebody's house is on fire, somebody down from a heart attack or, or some other type of injury. So I, I, I'm having a really, really tough time trying to understand, if, if this were an automobile dealership and you didn't want it there, I'd probably get that, but fire stations, that's what makes a community. So I'm, I'm, I'm very torn on this, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Harton. Commissioner Herman. Commissioner Herman.
I think I got it. Okay. Recently, well, last summer, in Verdai, there was a terrible fire, and it destroyed a home. In fact, at the same meeting, that, the Board of Adjustment meeting, the folks were applying for a variance to, to build their house back. Those people in Verdai would absolutely die to have a fire station in their community. That's all I needed to say.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Herman. All right, I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Liparelli, pull him over.
Mr. Chairman, as the Board is considering what to do with this, with this appeal, I just wanted to point out that within your, your staff report, you have some, some recommendations from, from staff, and you also have a recitation of the standards for the findings that, that need to be made in the issuance of a special use permit. So if you're going to sustain the Board of Adjustment's denial, you can, you can say why, and if you're going to overturn it, you can say why, but it should, should fall into those categories of findings that, that are made in special use permit decisions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. District Attorney Liparelli. All right. Commissioner John.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Board of County Commissioners reverse the decision of the BOA and approve with the conditions of approval included in attachment D to this report, special use permit case number SB 16-010 for Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District, having made the five findings required in accordance with the Washoe County Section 110.810.13. And I find in accordance with the area plan to, A, this is consistent with the area and the action and programs that are already in place, including the grocery store, the whole shopping center, your schools. Number two, this is a massive improvement to your community. It sounds like the, the fire district listened to the community's response to their, to the public comment period and, and really is providing excellent enhancements for this community. This is a senior community, mostly senior citizens. I presume you are going, and also a best effort REMSA area, so I presume you also will be saving lives, lives in this area. So I can also say the site is physically suitable and perfectly fits in with our plan of where a fire station should be. The issuance is not detrimental. In fact, it will increase public health, safety, and welfare. There's no military installation, installations there, and so I would, I would say that this is a perfect position, and, and I'm sorry to say, I do not agree with your Board of Adjustment, nor do I agree with you.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chairman, next item is item 15. This is a hearing and possible action to affirm, modify, or reverse the Board of Adjustment's denial of variance case number VA 16-005, Thomas Lipka, which sought approval of variances, one, reducing the year, rear yard setback from 20 feet to 14 feet 6 inches, and two, increasing the allowed overhang of the front eaves of the existing dwelling from 2 feet to 4 feet 6 inches into the front yard setback. The variances are, were requested to facilitate the expansion of the existing dwelling. Property is located at 755 Judith Court, at the southeast corner of its intersection with Harper Court in Incline Village.
All right, thank you, Mr. Manager. Do we have the appellant here today? Sir.
Mr. Chairman, Thomas Lipka.
Great. If you could step to the microphone, please, real hardly, Mr. Lipka. Or would you like to present for us?
Chairman Lucy, Madam Vice Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Robert Angress. I represent Thomas Lipka, the appellant. I have noticed quite cogently how pressed your schedule is and how much you have in front of you, so I'm going to dispense with a lengthy legal brief. You have my legal brief tendered in writing. I just wish to note for the Commission that Mr. Lipka requested a very minor variance solely for safety. Allow him an entry and an exit that is safe under the conditions. I requested that he take pictures yesterday afternoon of the situation he's facing. I sympathize. I lived in Incline for 23 years. And he is possessed of the smallest buildable lot in the subdivision. NRS 278-300 was enacted to provide relief. There are two serious safety issues. One has to do with the entry, which becomes black ice. The second is the front eaves are dripping life-threatening icicles. We don't even have to get into what the liability is from an insurance or other standpoint. It's just very substantial. I would like to note that when NRS 278 references Section 301(c), it references the time of the enactment. At the time of the enactment, there had been a zero rear setback. Now there is a 20-foot setback, and all that's being asked for is 5 feet and 4 inches. I would also note for you that in my 40 years of practice before this Commission, I have gotten variances for clients whose houses were the square foot of the lot of this appellant. So variances have been given out like candy in some respects, and now it's being denied for 300 and some square feet for life safety issues. And Mr. Lipka should not have to litigate this matter. He should, he's already lost his building season and is dealing with a historic snowfall. This Commission has de novo authority under the statute. You're essentially our administrative interim appellate court. We're asking for this modest request solely for safety, noting that there is no detriment, no objections, support by the neighbor, unanimous support by the CAB, and now, and all the findings can easily be made for a hardship from the inception of the HDS change in setback requirements. And now, Mr. Ford will give you a pictorial display of what we are facing here. I will remain available for any questions of the Commission.
Bear with a second here. My name is Wayne Ford. Mr. Chairman Lucy, Commissioners. I've been doing resident-to-design in Incline Village for 25 years. My address is Peel Box 4775, Incline Village, Nevada. Our request to vary the rear yard from 20 feet to 14 feet 6 inches is mainly for safety, but its findings can be made because of the shape and the funnel shape of this property. The addition that we're asking for is to resolve what you currently saw there, the exiting problems of this home and its orientation to the south in what is a canyon. This home's approximately 7,300 feet, and the snow funnels into this area. The front yard, we're not requesting a setback change. The front yard was misrepresented in staff report by saying that it needed a hold harmless agreement. It does not because we're not building any structures closer to the street. The overhang that we're asking to resolve in the upper right-hand corner is basically a drip issue. Architecture, it looks nice, but in reality, it doesn't function very well. You'll see some photos later on of where this ice will come off of that roof. But for the most part, the idea that we need a hold harmless is not the case here. The overhang expansion is 20 feet in the air at its lowest point, 24 feet in the air at its highest point, and is some 30 feet from the edge of pavement in the air where the plows basically operate today. Exhibit one. The lot is not a rectangle. It's a shape that basically funnels from 60-some feet in the front to 50 feet in the back. The measurement made is in the center of the lot. Measurement used to analyze whether this lot met the minimal regulatory requirement, it's not even applied to the rear of the lot, which is 50 feet in width. That 50 feet, that funneling, that trapezoidal shape, basically restricts the back of the property. If it was a rectangle, then we wouldn't be here today because the property lines would be parallel to each other. In this case, because of the home and how it was placed, we're asking for a modest corner of the addition to project into the backyard. Once again, this is to put in two exit doors that face east that are protected so we don't get this drift effect coming into the back of the home. Go ahead. We can come back to this plan. This is what I'm saying here. The red line is what you read in the staff report. The reality is the lots inside of it. Go ahead. During the summer months, which Mr. Lipka probably is wishing would come sooner than later right now, this whole rear yard appears very innocent. But because of its orientation to the south, open to thousands of acres of open space, basically, it's vulnerable to the snow and the storms coming in. These two doors back there are not even protected. And the deck that exists at this location is a 32-square-foot deck, little balcony deck, of which only about 16 square feet is usable. The lower left-hand picture here shows the neighbor. He wrote a letter of support. He understands the problem that Mr. Lipka has because his home is designed with a second-story deck with a stair that exits to the ground. Go ahead. This is what's seen out of the back of the home. There is no impact on anybody. In fact, IFGID wrote, "No impact" for their issues, if they existed at all. You can see where the property corner is. Go ahead. The reason I brought the TRPA standards in is quite often, they're not looked at. TRPA considers this a very small parcel because it allows for extra coverage to be transferred in. So in the eyes of the current TRPA regulations, this is a small lot, and I did a comparative study of the other lots in the same subdivision, and we'll show you how small it is and compare it to them. At the time, Washoe County, right now, has a 20-foot setback on the north side, a side yard setback of 10 feet on Harper, a side neighbor of 5 feet, and then there's this 20-foot rear yard that was put on by planning in 1998. Go ahead. In 1968, you'll see in red, that was the setbacks. In 1998, this is what became the current setbacks to the lot. The original developers of Incline, they had a lot of good things that they did, some not so good. In this case, they recognized the impact for the rear yard was not something that was really necessary by having a setback. Setbacks are to protect areas. There was no protection needed. Go ahead. Of the 96 lots looked at, this prepsium-shaped lot creates a problematic and small building envelope. The corner lot suffers from large side yard setbacks on Harper. And in those pictures, you saw the amount of snow storage that is being used currently. To build in that area would basically challenge anybody to be able to keep the structure standing up, given the amount of snow that's been blown and pushed into that side yard on Harper Court. Going out the back, it is somewhat removed from the snow storage, but it still is an area that needs protected for exiting. Right now, this home only has one good exit out the front that's compromised many times on the north side. The rear would allow for exiting for safety purposes, and as, and as we know, there was a recent article in The Bonanza, most residences, the fire district wants at least two exits that are clear, both for first responders and for homeowners to be able to get out of their building. The neighbor's lot, just to give you an idea of what happens on corner lots, it's 260-square-feet smaller an area, but it has 194-square-feet more buildable area because the setbacks are for an interior lot, not a corner lot. Go ahead. Okay. We took these pictures, or the owner took these pictures just recently. The updated ones I gave you a few minutes ago. Go ahead to the... You can see both upper and lower doors are totally blocked. When the snow comes in from the south, it hits the warmer building, which causes a melting. And then, with the temperatures dropping at night, that snow freezes against the doors, and you cannot even open them in. They freeze shut. By allowing this addition on the upper, which is going out seven feet, excuse me, the lower seven feet, the upper 10 feet, and allowing these doors to be to the east-facing with roof covering them, we avoid that freezing. Go ahead. I looked at 96 lots, and the results were this. Go ahead. In the same zoning, those lots vary from 6,000-square-feet of area to 20,000-square-feet of area. The average parcel size is 96.52. The Lipka parcel is 64.61. It only has 2,787 square feet to be built on. These corner parcels, some of them have been so challenging, they've been sold to the Forest Service over the years. Go ahead. Once again, we come back to the summer. We're pointing to the upper portion of the roof. We're asking to be extended as part of this variance. Frankly, most people would just go ahead and fix it, but because of the variance process, we want to have everything legal and upfront in fixing these kind of problems of overhangs. Once again, this is so high in the air, it doesn't really impact any snow removal, so no hold harmless is necessary. You can read the hardships I've gone through. The positives is that, under HSW, Health, Safety, and Welfare, that I'm in charge of making sure exists in my projects, the State Board of Architecture tells us that this is something that we should try to put into any solution, any design. And if there's any home that needs this, it's this house. The county zoning requirements state that the minimal width on an HDS-zone lot is 60 feet. The rear property line on this lot is 50 feet. Where we're building, it's 54.5 feet, and the building envelope we have is 41 feet. We can't move towards Harper because of the snow storage and the current design of the home. Going out towards the rear allows for no impact on any properties whatsoever with total neighborhood support. So the finding can be made that because of the shape of the property, its narrowness, where construction will solve the problems, that under the NRS code, it can be supported for a small lot and because of the shape of the property. I put this up because recently, we've been reminded that this is why licenses are issued, for health, safety, and welfare. And the State Board of Architecture basically states that our clients need that kind of view when a design is proposed. I do not take it lightly when board members are basically saying, at the Board of Adjustment level, that we should just live with it because we live in snow area. My feeling is, we should live with the best and most safe that we can design because we do live in snow area. So if there's a solution here, it doesn't impact anybody, and under the NRS codes, we can make a finding under safety, under the size of the property and the shape of the property, then this is a relief that can be given this property owner for a home that will end up being 2,700 square feet. will end up being twenty-seven-hundred square feet. That is not a huge house for the Incline area. It's a very modest and reasonable request. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. I think at this time, we're ready to make a decision. And so, oh, yes, public comment, I'm sorry. Do we have public comments signed in?
We do. Mr. Chair, Pete Todoroff.
Again, my name is Pete Todoroff. I'm the chairman of the Citizens Advisory Board in Incline Village, Crystal Bay. When we had this meeting, we had the last meeting was September twenty-eighth, this board unanimously approved this project. I don't understand how anybody can go approve a project without going out there. Every project that has come to my attention, I physically go out there and talk to the owners and talk to the person, the planner. And for me to have to come down here three different times on this item for the safety that is involved, and as you can see with the snow removals, block this back door, you can't even get out, I find really very troubling to me because, to me, it just doesn't show that the cab has no jurisdiction and no, we have no rights or anything to do this. And I go out, like I said, to every single variance or special use permit and talk to the people and look at this physically myself. And I'm not sure that that was done by the person who projected this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Todoroff. All right. I'll bring it back to the board.
That's all, public comment.
All right. Thank you. Sorry about that. Beed to the punch.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Vice Chair, Burke Pigler.
I'm ready to make a motion if the board is ready.
Absolutely. We would entertain a motion.
Okay. I would move the Board of County Commissioners reverse the decision of the BOA and approve the variance case number VA-16-005, Thomas Lipka, which, I probably should wear glasses, I guess, because I can't read anymore. Okay, back to the, which sought approval of variances, one, in reducing the rear yard setback from twenty feet to fourteen feet six inches, and two, increasing and allowed the allowed overhang on the front eaves of the existing dwelling from two feet to four feet six inches into the front yard setback, subject to the conditions of approval included as attachment D to the staff report. The variances, the variances facilitate the expansion of the existing dwelling. The approval is based upon the following findings required by Washoe County Code Section 110 dot eight oh four dot two five. Variances, special circumstances, because of the special circumstances related to the size of the shape of the property, the exceptional narrowness and shelliness of the property, the exceptional topographic conditions, extraordinary and exceptional situation or condition. Number two, there is no detriment. Everyone has supported this. The relief will not create a substantial detriment to the public good or any of the neighbors. Number three, there are no special privileges being granted here. The variance will not constitute a grant of any special privileges inconsistent with the limitations under, upon the other properties in the vicinity. Number four, the use is authorized. The variance will not authorize a use or activity which is not otherwise expressly authorized, and there is no effect from a military base. Number five.
I'll second that motion.
Madam Vice Chair, if I can ask that you consider amending that to remove a D because, as we've explicated, there's no need for a hold harmless because they're not asking for anything that's within the county.
Okay. So, all right, that's a good idea. Sorry, I shouldn't have included attachment D. So I will amend my motion to remove the requirement of attachment D to the staff report.
Secondor agrees to that. I have a motion and a second. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm getting pulled over again.
Mr. Chairman, I was just looking at staff. I don't know if there's anything else in attachment D. I was flipping through my screens, and I couldn't get to it. So if we could just get staff on the...
Mr. Callen.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair. I think perhaps including the conditions of approval at attachment D, but eliminating the requirement for the hold harmless is perhaps what we're trying to get at.
All right.
That'll be okay.
Is that acceptable? We will, if that's acceptable to our staff, we will then re-amend the motion again. And Secretary, Madam Secretary, do you want me to repeat the motion? Just let me then re-amend the motion by saying we will continue to keep attachment D in, but we will remove the requirement for a hold harmless clause.
All right. Secondor agrees.
The second one?
I have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Let the record show that Commissioner Hartung is not available for the vote. All right. Thank you, Mr. Lipka. Thank you, everyone. All right. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chair, next item is item sixteen. This is a second reading, possible adoption of inordinates imposing additional sales and use taxes as required by passage of Senate Bill 411 of the Seventeenth Nevada Legislature and Washoe County, question one.
All right. Madam Clerk.
This is a second reading, and it will be ordinance number fifteen ninety. An ordinance imposing additional sales and use taxes as required by the passage of SB four eleven of the Eighty-seventh Nevada Legislature and Washoe County, question one, two thousand and sixteen, by amending chapter twenty-one of the Washoe County Code miscellaneous and additional taxes, by adding section twenty-one point two one two imposition and rate of additional sales tax to impose an additional point five four percent sales tax, and by adding section twenty-one point three eight two imposition and rate of additional use tax to impose an additional point fifty-four percent tax and removing and providing for other matters properly related thereto. It was bill number seventeen seventy-four.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
I will make a, thank you. Make a motion to adopt ordinance number fifteen ninety.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify. I'm sorry, public comment?
There is public comment, but he is not here, Garth Elliott.
All right. We'll bring it back to the board. Mr. Liparelli.
Mr. Chairman, as I did in the introduction of this item, I'd like to just note that we corrected the typo in section three by adding the word "property" to follow the words tangible, personal property. That's the only difference from the version you saw at first reading.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for that. All right. So I have a motion and a second on the floor. No further public comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously with Commissioner Hartung being absent. All right. Mr. Manager. We are back to our legislative update.
Correct. Item nine, which is review and approve of the two thousand and seventeen Washoe County Legislative Principles, including an update and discussion regarding the Seventieth, which is the two thousand and seventeen session of the Nevada State Legislature, with possible direction to staff. Mr. Rogers is here to present this item.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. For the record, Al Rogers, Office of County Manager. I do have a slide deck here, and given the previous presenter, I will expedite this to go through quickly what we need to cover in terms of the legislative principles and wanted to give you an overview. But more importantly, we want to seek any input you have based upon what we know to date moving into the legislature, which is fast approaching. First thing I wanted to do is go over our Washoe legislative team. A lot of the names you see up there are familiar, but I would like to highlight, and I know much to the anticipation of this board, is that we have formally offered and hired our new government affairs analyst, and Jamie Rodriguez, who some of you know of. We'll be starting with this next Monday, January thirtieth. So we eagerly await her arrival and have plenty of things to do for her in that short week before the legislature starts. But let me assure you that one of the first things, we'll be stopping by each one of your offices to visit and make sure that we hear you first. Real quickly, again, high level, just wanted to identify the changes in both the majority and the minority leader. You see the breakouts, those we can provide to you, but we don't, do know that there was a change in leadership there at the state senate level, no different at the state assembly level. Mr. Ferson now leading the majority, and Paul Anderson, the minority. And then also, you'll have a handout coming out, but we typically identify our county delegation, some of who were at our legislative reception last week. Thank you to Senator Ratty here. And then also our assembly delegation that you see here. Again, thank you to Assemblymen Tolles and Krasner for attending last week's legislative reception. So look forward to working with them, and I have distributed a document to you that not only identifies their contact information, but the committees that they will be participating and/or leading in some cases. So in the interim, just wanted to cover quickly what we've been doing. Certainly, while we head into a legislative session, that is really our game-on time, there's lots to do in between. We've been meeting with all of the management. We've been meeting with department directors to gather input in this interim time, talking about internal bill tracking efforts. Our internal bill, Washoe Bills, has been updated, which hopefully will give us a more effective tool to track the bills as we head into the seventeen session. We're going to cover real quickly here in a minute the legislative principle goals and issues. I can tell you right now, we have over forty fiscal notes that have hit already, we're responding to prior to the session starting on the sixth, and I don't see that slowing down. So again, while we say it starts on February sixth, it has started. We'll continue to track the BDRs and the legislative bills, and I'll go through that real quick here. As far as the legislative principles, again, we made little to no modifications to this, seeing that the four specific areas of respect for governmental roles, recover our economic strength, regional solutions, and commitment being those overarching principles that we use to guide us in our day-to-day, you know, representation of Washoe County at the legislature. So we'll go through each one of those quickly. Again, the five bullets here, partners, we know we can't do it without our regional partners. We will focus on outcomes, and we will hold true and fast the local determination being one of our main principles. Wrapping these up, local decision-making and flexibility, and certainly taking the position of unfunded mandates not being imposed on Washoe County or really any jurisdiction within the state of Nevada. Recovering our economic strength, again, you can see the terms or the points that we're covering here in terms of supporting the economic recovery and development. We want long-term sustainable solutions when possible, and certainly fiscal responsibility. As I identified earlier, as fiscal notes come in, we will again be forthright in our fiscal responsibility and represent what the impact could be to Washoe County. And then wrapping up with regional solutions to service, intergovernmental collaboration, legislative relations, we will continue those efforts as has been in previous sessions. And then finally, the commitment. We are committed to working with the legislature, all of the stakeholders, and again, representing Washoe County to the best that we can. Legislative principles, the communication policy. Again, legislative updates, we'll talk about that in a minute, but really that is our communication to you. We plan on coming to every scheduled Board of County Commissioner meeting moving forward till the end of session with an agenda item that styles us to report to you what's going on, not necessarily craft and get into bills, but from a high level, identify those bills and those issues which are critical to you and to Washoe County. In terms of board direction, as I just mentioned, we'll really stick to the objectives and the intent versus working on specific bills. Adopting legislative positions, when they do come before you, before direction or action, the majority will be the official position. In terms of lobbyist authority, lobbyists, or lobby staff, I should say, will have the authority to make decisions on matters that are known to the best interest of the policy, but it is understood that lobby staff will confer and decide with the appropriate position on behalf of Washoe County with your input, primarily through the chair and obviously our legislative liaison, the vice chair. Commission participation, we're asking you as commissioners to notify the county through the manager, through our lobbyists, through all points of contact, when a legislator, when you have talked to a legislator or constituent on behalf of a legislator, to ensure that we provide a cohesive and well-organized lobbying effort. Appointed boards, authorization to represent Washoe County must be approved by the commission or the manager's office, and this includes members of boards, commissions or task force appointed by the board. And then special meetings, which again, I'll touch on here as we conclude, is we may need, but at this point, we are operating under the premise that we will come to you at every regularly scheduled board meeting, but if necessary, we'll schedule a special meeting if the situation dictates. So real quick, just to highlight, right now, as of today, we have eight hundred and sixteen BDRs. One hundred and sixty-eight have already been prefilled as Assembly and Senate bills. As I noted, thirty-eight. That number is up over forty today. Some bills of interest, I think on January tenth, you indicated some interest in, and previously too, annexation and taxes. We've identified AB forty-eight, the Clark County bill that's moving forward or will move forward. Right now, there's over twenty-five, and I think that number as of today climbed over thirty BDRs and bills that are focused on various taxes, certainly property taxes one of those, but there are many. I highlighted a couple there in terms of the Committee on Taxation, NAUCO's AB forty-three, and Senator Ratty's BDR that currently sits. Some other bills, labor relations, pension system, we've seen a couple for labor relations and pension system, BDR twenty-three forty-eight, from the state controllers one. There's a couple related to agriculture extension, some opportunities there. And of course, mental health, courts, seniors, animals, public safety, we are entering and tracking and also getting out to departments as we speak in terms of gathering that feedback prior to the opening of the session a week from Monday. So in conclusion, we start on Monday, the sixth, the week from Monday. We will give you legislative updates on a regular basis, all regularly scheduled meetings and any special meetings if necessary. So with that, I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. I appreciate that. I'll open it up to the board. Is there any questions at this time? All right. Christian Herman, none? Good? All right.
Mr. Chair, there's no public comment.
I was just getting to that. Just getting to that, Jan. Thank you. I appreciate that. So no public comment? So with that, I appreciate the report.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chair, next item is item seventeen, which is public comment.
Miss, Madam Clerk.
We have one signed in, Kathy Brandhorst.
All right.
My name is Kathy Brandhorst, and I am the United States President. I just wanted to let you know I am still at the Donner Motel. There has been a lot more bodies, dead bodies found, and a lot more body parts in the garbage bin. And it doesn't seem to get better. It seems to get a lot worse. I was talking to the manager the other day, and he told me, "I must move because it's not getting any better for you either." It looks like there's more break-ins, more rapes, and more people who need more babies delivered in my room. And also, they're stealing those babies because they need to swallow those babies to make themselves more beautiful than ever. And I just wanted to tell you too, David Gomes Platoon is not safe in this area at all. We have found a lot of chopped heads in the rooms where they were staying in each and every individual rooms. These chopped heads are worn by the people on death row, and of course, death row is still in our area. And there's not that many left. It's just they're very old, old, ancient, ancient, ancient. We have found them over a million years old. And there's no blood whatsoever. I had assist walker in the shooting in that day in that house because the children do live there, not adults. They don't live there at all. So... So I did assist, and guess what we found? They're all Orientals with the Filipino look. And they do not live in that house. It's just young children that live in that house, and they've been there for about 10 months. They had no right to break in and enter their home. That's their home, that's where they live. And you people have no right to say other things about me and Walker because we did do our job. And it's up to us to help out the United States ourselves. We do not need you to put us down and do real bad things to us to make us more sick than ever. We will still stay on our toes, and we will still help the United States people because you do come across the border of Mexico.
Thank you, Mrs. Brandhorst. All right. Ms., I'm very sorry. I apologize. All right. Bringing it back to the board. Is there...Mr. Manager.
Item 18, Commissioner County Manager's announcements.
Commissioner Herman.
All right. I have three lemons to talk about, well, issues in Lemon Valley. You... Okay, you heard a plea today for the fact that there's no Lemon Valley cab, and they would really like to be talking about that a little bit more. Mr. Snow has told me, you know, he hasn't seen the burned-out home in Lemon Valley on the agenda yet, as we requested. And then, of course, the flood, the ditches, the culverts. And I wonder if we could get some kind of report about the feasibility of maybe putting a massive cleanup of ditches and things out for bid with the private sector. See what we come up with, just a suggestion.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Herman. Commissioner Jung. Nothing? Commissioner Burke Bigler? All right. That leaves it to me. Well, you know, it's a wonderful day. We always start with a packed house and always end up empty, so we've got to pick up our performance somehow. So, but with that being said, I want to wish our wonderful fellow county commissioner, Kitty Jung, a wonderful healthy birthday tomorrow. We wish you the best and hope you have a great day. With that being said, I have nothing else to add at this time. Mr. Manager? I'm being pulled over. Maybe you're not good to have a birthday. Your birthday's been postponed. Your birthday is postponed.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Herman and I were just discussing, she has a conflict, I believe, on the next flood board meeting date, so we may be looking for an alternate to attend that meeting.
What's that date?
It would be...
I'm sure one of us...
It's on a Friday, but that's all I can remember.
Do we want to try to talk about that offline, and we can get somebody to fill in? All right. We'll get somebody to fill in for Commissioner Herman. Thank you for bringing that up. All right. We are adjourned, folks. Thank you very much.